Good evening. It's 6 o'clock and I'm going to call to order the Placerville Planning Commission regular meeting Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Ms. Hunter, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Vice Chair Carter.
Present.
Bill Mark Commissioner Friend as absent. Chair Keeney.
Here.
Commissioner Lepper.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Very good. Tonight, we have no closed session reports. Next item is the adoption of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adopt our agenda.
I will move the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Lepper. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Passes 4-0. The next item is the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by general consent unless any commissioner requests a roll call vote or any member of the commission or staff or audience wishes to remove an item for discussion. I would like to pull the only item on our consent calendar, which is the approval of the minutes 5.1. Are there any other concerns? My concern is a minor typo, mistake, on our minutes from July 2nd, under number 5. Approving the minutes of the meeting for June 18th, 2024, the vote was that Mr. Smith and I voted aye and Mr. Friend abstained. And so the voice vote was 2-0. That was my concern. Does anyone else have any changes to the minutes? Any concerns? Okay, with that amendment, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended minutes.
Can we motion?
That's right, you two were
I'm going to. I was absent, so I will be abstaining on this one.
Great Scott. Okay, Mr. Smith, would you please, would you like to make a motion to approve the minutes from
I move that the minutes amended to reflect what the chair has described.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And I will second that. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So, 2-0. Commissioner Smith and Keeney. All right. Taking care of that. Moving on. That takes us to item 7, items of interest to the public and public comment on non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda tonight, and the subject matter is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. State law prohibits the commission from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the Planning Commission under specified circumstances. Is anyone in the public tonight who would like to share public comment?
I would.
Please step up to the podium. And if you would, please state your name for the record.
I just wanted to say thank you. I'm the guy with that Trex deck on Cedar Ravine, and I just wanted to say, I'm so happy.
Oh, good. And so your project is complete?
Pardon me?
Is the project complete at this time?
Oh, I've got a shrine on my building permit now. Are you kidding? Yes, it's perfect. So I just wanted to say thank you guys for, and these guys especially. They are the best. All right?
Thank you very much. That was fantastic. And it's always nice for staff to get some well-deserved recognition, too.
I'm thinking about breaking into song.
Is there anyone else in the audience?
These are my neighbors, so I'm here for these guys. But thank you, all of you.
You're quite welcome. Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to share a public comment with us? Okay, seeing none. Move on to number 8, written communications non-agenda items. Written comments received on non-agenda items pertaining to business within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Do we have any such?
We have none.
Thank you. No written communications. Number 9 is presentations and workshops. We have none of those tonight. And so we'll move on to item 10, environmental assessments and public hearings. 10.1 is site plan review 2406. This is a historic district review regarding medium-density multifamily residential historic district zone to modify existing single-family residence. I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Hunter, for the staff report.
Oh, I recuse myself.
Oh.
For Sean Jacobs? Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry?
I was just recusing myself. I get to take a break.
Okay. We'll let Mr. Smith step away from the dais before you begin your staff report.
Okay.
All right.
When you're ready, Ms. Hunter.
So Planning Commission approval is required for projects located within any of the city's four historic districts where the project includes modifications to the exterior architecture of the building as visible from the right-of-way. SPR 24-06 includes the removal of pressboard siding from the northern and eastern elevations of the subject structure, address 3066 Cedar Ravine Road, as well as the repair and/or replacement of the wood siding to match as necessary using milled wood. The project also includes removal and replacement of the existing contemporary aluminum door with a solid wood door in an arts and crafts bungalow style. The single family, sorry, the single-story 750-square-foot dwelling is located within the Cedar Ravine Historic District but is not included within a local, state, or federal register of historic structures. The subject structure is one of three dwellings on the parcel, and based on a summary provided by the project applicants, provided in attachment 2 of the staff report, 3066 Cedar Ravine Road is believed to have been built in the 1920s at a different location and later moved to the subject parcel in the 1950s. The original wood siding on the northern and eastern elevations were covered with pressboard siding following the structure's relocation to the subject parcel, leaving the southern and western elevations uncovered. Overall, the removal of the pressboard siding and restoration of the original wood siding using milled wood as needed will permit continued use of the single-family residence while visually improving the structure and its historic integrity. It is the opinion of staff that the project is consistent with zoning ordinance sections 10-4-9 Site Plan Review and 10-4-10 Historic Buildings in the City and with the city's development guide. The project is further consistent with Goals C and F of the General Plan Housing Element, Goal G of the Natural, Cultural, and Scenic Resources Element, and Goals C and I of the Community Design Element. The request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA guidelines section 15301 and 15331 in that the project involves minor alterations to an existing private structure that shall result in no expansion of the existing use to a structure not included on a local, state, or federal historic resource inventory. As such, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of the request, and conditionally approve SPR 24-06 based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. Do either of you have questions for Ms. Hunter at this time?
I just have a couple of quick disclosures, if that's okay?
Go right ahead.
First, I know the applicants, not familiar enough that it will affect my judgment in the, in this, but I just wanted to disclose that I am familiar with them. And also, we had a small, I saw them on Thursday, so a small ex parte, they did inform me they had a project coming. We did not talk about any details about the project. I have no knowledge, but we did, they did let me know that they were coming before the Planning Commission. So just a small ex parte disclosure there. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. I'll just take this opportunity to say that I did drive by, actually, I drove by all the projects that we have hearings on tonight, including this one. So, but I did take a look at it in the, in its context. So, we have the staff report, no questions for staff. At this time, we would like the project applicant to step up to the podium and just take a moment if there's anything you want to highlight as far as the application. You know, the staff report, I think, is very clear. Your application, your submittal is very, also very clear and detailed. And also, we thank you for going to such effort to, you know, restore a structure in our historic district. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
And if I might start off, and then, so my name is Jacob Rigoli, one of the co-owners of the property. This is Sean, my husband. So I'll turn it quickly over to him because, frankly, he's the better to address some of the historic nature of the property. But I will first say that we are very, we have a tremendous gratitude to the commission here and to the staff, is a general comment, that the work that you're doing in general to help, I believe it's on a voluntary basis, excuse me if I'm wrong, but we do appreciate the effect that that has, over time in particular, for helping to preserve history. I will add, and our historic resources and our community, I will add that that's important to us personally. We sort of have defined our lives here in Placerville in part around doing just that. And so we're really glad to participate in a process like this. It really matters to us that this type of care is taken, and we're trying to take that care with these buildings and really take it back and honor its history. So I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate those words.
I echo all of the sentiments Jacob just shared. I just wanted to show you a piece of this press board.
This is from the structure?
This is from the structure. So this is what's covering old
So that's the exterior, what we would see from
Yeah, this is what's on there now. They put it over the old shiplap siding. And so when we started peeling this off and saw the old wood behind, we got so excited, as you can imagine. We ripped it off the front upper portion, and I couldn't believe that they'd put this over the beautiful, you know,
Right, the sunburst, right.
And we were exploring, we were just sort of looking what's behind it and
Right. Then I paused, and I said, better go to the city. But this is, just wanted you guys to see, and on a larger piece that we couldn't bring in, they had 2014 stamped on the back of it. So clearly, a more recent addition. And that's why only some malls have it and others not. But we're very excited.
Okay. And the, and the press board is not covering over another kind of siding? It's, it is the siding?
No, it's covering the old original siding.
It's covering, the original. And so you'll reveal the original and then replace it as you
If and as it needs it.
Okay.
And I think one of the stipulations and the contingencies
Yes.
is in fact, which we're glad to see, is in fact, we intend to do this. To the degree that repairs may be required or necessary, we will again do that in, and in furtherance of the historic siding that was behind it, meaning we will custom mill
Exact replica.
to match the same wood, same, yeah, everything. So.
That's all I had.
Well, thank you so much for that effort. Any comments from either of you?
I would just say that, yeah, I appreciate you guys. I know that you are pillars of our historic community, and you guys show that in the, the care that you give your property. And you're doing that, again, in my opinion, with this project, even going to the length of custom milling lumber to match, I think, is a wonderful, yeah, it's a wonderful project, in my opinion. I look forward to, yeah, to hopefully passing it for you guys. I think it's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Staff.
Okay. So we've heard from the applicant. Would any members of the public like to step up to the podium if you have a comment about this project that we need to consider? Okay, seeing no one from the public with a comment, I'll close the public hearing portion of this and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. I'll start by saying, I think, this is just obviously a wonderful project, completely in keeping with, you know, all the standards that we've been discussing and working with over many years now. Anyone else have a comment? All right. Would you like to make
Yeah, I'm in agreeance with both the other commissioners that this project is great. We really appreciate the investment and the, you know, even just taking the time to submit the narrative and write that down. That's going to be really helpful for us in a goal, it works towards the ultimate goals that we have around our historic district. So just echo everyone's excitement around this and also thank staff for their work on it. And I will make a motion. Let me get there. Been like two months. I'm a little rusty. So let's see. Here we go.
I'll take her.
Okay. So I will make the motion that we adopt the staff report as part of the public record, that we make the findings in support of SPR 24-06 as listed on page 9 and 10 on the staff report, and that we conditionally approve SPR 24-06 located at 3066 Cedar Ravine Road based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1 of the staff report dated August 20th, 24.
I will second that. I will second that.
Wonderful. We have a motion and a second. Any further comment? All right, Ms. Hunter, would you please call the vote?
Right. Vice Chair Carter.
Aye.
Chair Keeney.
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper.
Aye.
All right. 3-0 approval. And congratulations. I will state that there is a 10, 10-day appeal period on this action that we've taken as commission. But barring any appeal or slowdown, you know, good luck with your project. Again, thank you very much for your effort and concern. And thank you for taking the time to come down here and talk to us for a few minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item 10.2. Oh, we need to bring Mr. Smith back in unless he, he doesn't have a conflict with this, does he?
He said he's going to abstain from this one, too.
Oh, he's, okay.
I don't know.
So, all right. So he will recuse himself for item 10.2, which is another site plan review, SPR 90-04R2 for 3079 Cedar Ravine Road. Consideration of a site plan review revision to request within the medium-density multifamily residential historic district zone to remove the existing redwood railing on the west elevation of the single-family residence. And I will turn it over again to you, Ms. Hunter, for the staff report.
Thank you. So SPR 90-04-R2 includes exterior modifications to the existing single-family dwelling, address 3079 Cedar Ravine Road, and garage, including the removal of the existing wooden stair and deck railing on the western and northern side of the dwelling overlooking Cedar Ravine Road, replacement of wood railing with an ornamental iron railing, and removal and replacement of an existing window from the western garage elevation with a composite window. It should be noted that, following the posting of the notice of public hearing, the applicant clarified with staff that the window to be replaced in the garage, on the garage, is composite, not wood. This does not change staff's analysis or recommendation to the Planning Commission. For background, the subject dwelling was constructed in 1901 as a Queen Anne Victorian cottage. It was briefly used as a professional office in the 1980s but was converted back to a single-family dwelling in 1990 under SPR 90-04. SPR 90-04 included the interior and exterior renovation of the dwelling and the construction of the 780-square-foot garage. The subject dwelling last came before the commission on June 6th, 2023 to replace all wooden windows visible from Cedar Ravine Road with Anderson 400 series composite windows. 3079 Cedar Ravine Road is not included within the city's historic resources inventory. However, any exterior work visible from the right-of-way within a historic district is evaluated for overall consistency with zoning ordinance sections 10-4-10 Historic Buildings in the City. The project includes the removal of the existing redwood railing along the front deck and stairway and replacement with a custom-made iron railing. The current railing is approximately 36 inches in height, and the applicant has indicated that, for safety reasons, specifically fall prevention, they desire to raise the height of the railing to meet current code requirements. While a change to the front elevation, the elevation rendering of the proposed iron railing provided by the applicant and included in Attachment 2 of the staff report would be architecturally compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and would not diminish the historic character of the dwelling. The use of iron railings was prevalent during the time period of construction of the house, circa 1901. Further, replacement of the windows on the western elevation of the garage with the proposed composite material is consistent with previous approvals and would not result in a removal of distinctive materials or the alteration of historic features, specifically as the garage was constructed in the early 1990s. As such, it is the opinion of staff that the project is consistent with zoning ordinance sections 10-4-9 and 10-4-10 with Goal F of the General Plan Housing Element, Goal G of the Natural, Cultural, and Scenic Resources Element, Goal C of the Community Design Element, and with the City of Placerville Development Guide. The request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA guidelines sections 15301 and 15331 in that the project involves minor alterations to an existing private structure that shall result in no expansion of the existing use, and it is a structure not included on local, state, or federal historic resource inventories. As such, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of the request, and conditionally approve SPR 90-04-R2 based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. At this time, I just want to ask for clarification. There is some minor inconsistencies, and I think this is due to the fact that the project changed somewhat from when the applicant first came to the city to do the, the deck or porch project. And I just want to make sure that it's clear to all of us, Ms. Hunter and I had a discussion about this, that all of the railing on the porch, on the west and the north, as well as the staircase, all of that will be replaced. It's wood, redwood now, and that will be changed to the iron railing. I got confused that there's a mention of a western elevation in one place, and then I see on page 5 in, under, city's explanation under Goal C 6, it does say redwood railing along the front deck and stairway. So I just want, I'm not sure how we can make this crystal clear. I also got a little confused because the scope of work, as it's described in the applicant's submittal, the first page says it clearly, existing railing system that does not meet present-day code. And so that, I think, we can take to mean all of the railing there on the west, the north, as well as the staircase. I got, so when I read that, I was, I thought I was confident the extent of work. Then I went, let's see, page 1, 2, 3, 4, page 5 in the applicant's submittal, there's a diagram, a sketch. It says, new to code railing system, six sections. And so that shows the railing on the, only on what's described as the porch. We've kind of used deck and porch interchangeably. So then I thought, well, then they're not going to do the staircase anyway. I really, that's the only concern I have with the staff report, and I think at some point, we need to just clarify that, the extent of the project description. That was my comment about it. Other than that, I think it is very clear what the applicant intends to do.
I had one very small question, just for clarity, under the, on page 4 of the staff report, under the application history, on the second paragraph that says, "On June 6, 2023." Should that be 2024? Or is that related to the June 6, 2023?
Yes, that should be 2024.
Okay, great. That's what I was wondering. And it's not a big deal, but just for, like, clarity and time flow, timeline flow, I wanted to point that out, so.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just have one. I wanted to, on page 8 of the staff report, I want, I'm going to disagree slightly with staff on this one. Under the heading "Windows" in that first paragraph, where it talks about "General consensus of the council regarding the use of vinyl windows within historic district for properties not included in historic inventory or register of historic places," where it was stated that vinyl windows is an acceptable alternative as a modern product. I disagree with that statement. We still have been operating under the auspice that we need to find an exemption or an exception to allow vinyl windows in historic, in buildings in historic, you know, we have, we need findings to allow them. They're not just automatically accepted as a compatible replacement material or acceptable alternative to a modern product. Anyway, I'm going to disagree with staff on that. We still have been operating under the understanding that we need to find, do findings as case by case. There has to be a reason to, to bypass the standards and allow vinyl windows in historic district buildings. And so maybe I'm misreading the wording of that, but to me, that's a little unclear because I don't think that vinyl windows are an acceptable alternative in historic districts. I think we still need to make findings to justify that, so.
I don't agree with you. In many cases, we have discussed vinyl windows and found them to be an often acceptable alternative to a wood product. And this is discussing general consensus of the council regarding vinyl windows. So, and while you, as a commissioner, you know, are free to disagree with the council's determination, I'm not comfortable with amending this, but, you know, you're, I might as well take
Yes, I'm just making, I wanted to put it on the record that I, that I don't agree with that wording. And since I've been on the, on the commission, every time we have approved vinyl windows, we have made findings to justify those, that decision. It's not just a automatically acceptable alternative as a modern building material. And so I guess that was the wording that I, that I disagreed with and that I think that we need, you know, to continue to make findings that vinyl windows are appropriate on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, I think that
And not that they're an automatic alternative.
That's what I agree with you on that.
Yeah. And that was my only point. I just wanted to put that in the record, so.
Okay.
I, yeah, I
Hang on.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we
Final window.
We aren't, I'm sorry, we aren't taking
Oh, Patricia Foley Moonos.
We've closed public comment. This is, actually, we haven't opened. I'm sorry, I got very confused. We will allow you here in a moment to step up and share your thoughts with us. I apologize.
I think I'm kind of in the same boat with both of you. I understand what you're saying. I think the fact that it's referencing council, which was a specific conversation that they had, makes me more comfortable with the wording in here. If it was referencing an automatic thing, then I fully understand what you're protecting for, but I think it's okay, especially since it references council and not commission.
And even going back and watching that conversation, I don't agree that that's, that that exactly was their consensus. But anyway, I just wanted to bring it, you know, just to mention it, just so it's on the record.
It's going to get to the bottom of that either way.
Yep. Thank you.
We're working on that.
Okay. So, any, we've heard from both. We've taken, any comment back from staff about that? Do you have a suggestion on perhaps where we can?
I do recall that particular discussion that was held with the council on the vinyl window because typically, that's the lion's share of these applications that come before you. And I have to agree with Commissioner Carter. Basically, I agree with everyone. But I think what the council did, and this was in response to the consultant that we had, and the consultant was basically stating that under the Secretary Interior, Secretary of Interior standards, that the city has some, a lot of leeway in making the judgment on when an alternative product can be used. So that's why I agree with Mr. Carter that it would be appropriate to make a finding, an additional finding if there isn't one provided to you, if you decide that it is appropriate to use the vinyl windows based on whatever your parameters are that you're looking at, the fact that it may be, it was not on an inventory. It's, it's not absolutely pristine where everything is intact and it's just replacing wood for woods, say, for example. So I think it would be appropriate, if you're inclined to approve it, to have an additional finding to support it.
Well, and we're not even, we're not even Well, and we're not even, we're not even reviewing vinyl windows in this, in this review, which is why I was kind of, I thought it was strange and kind of.
It has to do with modern, modern materials within the historic district and allowances or previous approvals that have allowed that to move forward for structures that are not included on the, on the inventory.
And I believe that, we had a long conversation about these composite windows, I believe, with their project originally, and we talked about the fact, these composite windows are wood with a composite protective sheeting on the outside. They are predominantly made of wood, protected by composite. And so anyway, it just seemed incongruous to this, to this project in general, and I thought it was a little broad and kind of overly, but.
Totally.
Understanding that it was talking about council and not us, but anyway, I just wanted to, that's, that was the purpose of me bringing it to light, so.
Totally, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, now, we will open it up. The applicant is here, if you'd like to step up to the podium and.
Well, maybe I don't need to speak now, but you seem to understand that our windows are not going to be vinyl.
Hundred percent.
They're going to be a composite Anderson window that we installed in the main house. And all the, we've, we had dry rot, that was, that was, that's the only reason we're changing it. And they were two windows in a wooden frame, you know, two new windows. They were not wooden windows. And so we've enabled to save all the trim and everything, and it should look exactly the same.
Anything else about the project you'd like to emphasize or share with us?
Not unless you have questions.
I just want to make sure that we are on the right track. Your intent is regarding the railing, the stairs, railing on the stairs.
Okay.
The west elevation as well as the north elevation, or north side of the porch slash deck.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be the total porch. We had some difficulty finding substitute railings because the supports for the house go up like the 32 inches or whatever, and then it's churned wood, which, it's hard to find anything that's already made that, that will go that extra two inches where the churned wood goes in from the rectangular support at the bottom. So, but we found a, a great.
The main thing was the architectural posts, which are very visible through the front of the whole house, how to attach, because the old railing, yes. My gentleman friend there, he would easily just fall over with, and they were 32, the height of the.
Shorter.
Right, I think 27 inches. So they're very below the height of normal or regulated railings. So it was kind of difficult to find, I went through three different people to find, and so you have a picture of the new railings that we want to put, and how the designer came up with, they will be attached to the posts where it doesn't interfere with the architectural design of the upper part, which is round and stuff, because that was my thing as, how are we going to attach something, you know, flat to something round unless you do something? And two designers backed away.
And you're referring to this diagram, then, your submittal?
And the gentleman who came up with that design, I thought was brilliant, where they would be secured at the bottom where it starts to turn round, which is about 25 inches, and then the rest of it would be totally up to, and it would be secured completely where a tall person, no matter what, would not be able to go over, and would meet that 42-inch height, which is the standard height now. So, but it is going to be completely iron from, like I said, from, I guess, you know, the corner of the building completely in front, and now the railing down the stairs, they seem to be legal height, okay? They're not below the standard, but since we are changing everything, it's kind of lame not to change the stairs. So we are, the stair railings will still maintain the height that they have, which is standard, and, but we're just getting rid of the old wood.
Okay.
And so basically, hopefully, you know, the design, as far as we're concerned, I thought that was a really good design that the guy came up with, and so we went with him in doing this. So as soon as you guys approve this, then, you know, I can tell them to start doing.
Well, thank you for explaining, you know, the extent and how you're going to tie in. It makes sense to do it all the same, as opposed to having one element wood and one style, and then something else adjacent to it.
And like I said, we went through one guy, and he was trying to figure out how to attach it at the bottom and then secure it at the top to keep, you know, everything, and he couldn't come up with a rounded thing to attach to the round part of the post. And so he gave up, but then, like I said, the gentleman that did give me that drawing, I thought that was great, and he came by and, you know, he had a little thing and he showed me, and I thought that was a great little thing to do. I think it would keep that Queen Anne look, which is, you know, wrought iron, and it's, and I think it would make our place look a little better, or safer more than anything else, because I hate to have somebody come over and just flip over. A short guy like me, I would be able to, things like right here, so, but a gentleman like him would definitely fall over and hurt themselves, and we are talking about, you know, at least a seven-foot fall or even more. And so when my wife was doing the maintenance, that's why we came up with the idea of maybe we should get rid of the railing and do something more, and hopefully, you know, this will take care of the problem.
Okay, thank you very much. Did you have a question for the applicant?
Yeah, I did. Actually, more of a comment than a question, I guess, but yeah. I just want to, first, I want to thank you guys for your, for your patience on that earlier discussion. I understand sometimes it's hard to listen to, we sound kind of circuitous up here, that we don't really get to our point very quickly, but I did realize that, you know, that the windows were not vinyl. I just had to try and get there from a different perspective. So thank you for your patience on that. And this, if you don't mind, the microphone, because the people, there are people online that, yeah.
Well, one of the things, the, the rest of the house, or at least the garage and the guest room that's attached, still has that same windows that, you know, we're getting rid of, and they are a good window. It's just unfortunate that this window that faces there, I think the previous owner had a Kiwi plant, and while my wife is doing maintenance, that's how we found out that that whole thing was rotten, and we're very lucky that it didn't, you know, contaminate the rest of the framing of the place, and we cleaned it out, and I got it ready for it to be framed. But we are going to bring in the same material, the Anderson windows that we used in the main house, to that one little section. The rest of the windows, which are the same kind that we got rid of, they're still very intact, you know, and we don't plan on getting rid of them unless, you know, we find anything damaged or anything, but they are a good window, and it's just unfortunate that we had to change this one, and they are like the Anderson windows.
Yeah, and the pictures you provided us of the dry rot is very obvious, the damage, and so, yeah. And I want to commend you guys, just like I told Sean and Jacob, your home is beautiful. I appreciate as much effort that you guys put into making that an absolute model of the neighborhood. I want to commend you. And also wanted to comment on these railings. I think it's, you know, it's, I agree with staff's opinion that it is a, it's a commonly used, it's a period-appropriate material, which I think is appropriate, or I think is important. It is, you know, while also meeting modern building codes, fire hardening, all the things that, you know, we talk about, I think this is a really good balance of modern building materials that are period-appropriate, that meet all the, you know, the modern code requirements. I think this is, this is a really good striking of balance between maintaining and upgrading a property while still maintaining the historic character, so, yeah.
Right, and would anyone else from the audience like to step up to the podium at this time to share comments about the, talk about the project before us?
I'd love to, but I won't. No, I got to say, god dang it. I got to say, I live across the street from these guys, and their houses.
You can move the microphone up so it's a little more comfortable there.
You call me Flip. I live across the street from those guys, and their house is gorgeous. And Mark Anthony is Jesus. He's a little fireplug, I tell you. He's always out, and Patty too. My goodness, she's out there doing stuff to the front yard, but I will tell you, the iron fencing does not deteriorate from the neighborhood aesthetics at all, you know? It really is pretty. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
I couldn't help it.
Would anyone else like to comment on the project?
This is a consistent comment, being neighbors as well across the street. We certainly appreciate all the work that has gone into, and the benefit to our street and community historic neighborhood that you've provided and brought, and this feels very consistent in our opinion as neighbors, as well with the historic integrity of the district.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to comment at this time? Okay, at this time, I will close the public comment portion of the review and bring it back to the commission for possible action. I agree with you, Mr. Carter, that this is, I think, a wonderful project, brings in the elements of safety and as well as, you know, this, this new iron railing may be more in keeping with what was there at some time in the past, we just don't know. We know what we have in front, we have on the house today. So it, I think, is fitting with the style, and it's a good project to, especially safety and to maintain those street-facing elevations.
Yeah, I basically echo a lot of what you guys have said. Obviously, when I read the thing and saw changing from wood, you immediately go, ah! And then, as I read through the, the application and looked at the current wood railing, it's really not visually significant. There is nothing that is getting taken away visually, I believe, by replacing it with the iron material, and I agree. I think it could actually look a little nicer and be maybe a little bit more interesting visually. So I think it is a really good example of us using the materials that were available and that are relevant to the time period. It is a beautiful home, and I do think that the fire hardening is something that comes into play there, which we're always appreciative of. So my reflections were pretty much on par with both of yours, so.
Also, back to the window, we should comment on that. I think that is in keeping the, you know, the structure itself is from 1990, but this is actually going to make it even more consistent with the, the house. We already approved this particular window, so, you know, they will be the same from, that is, the Cedar Ravine side. So it was interesting to hear that the, the old windows were still, that are, I guess, on the rest of the garage are still serviceable, and it is just unfortunate, for some reason, installation, you know, it just, this particular window took, took too much abuse.
Plant right up against the building.
Oh, okay.
And the watering, and it just so happened that, and luckily, that it just, like in the picture, it just, you know, deteriorated just that, and it ruined the whole window, but luckily, my wife got rid of the Kiwi plant and all that watering area, and so it stopped a lot of it.
So this will, you know, stop the further degradation?
I had the same comment about the window, that I'm happy that it's congruent with the others that have been installed. It's getting installed pretty close in time, so that's always nice to have everything kind of on the same timeline, and that it's maintaining the exterior features, so I think that it is appropriate.
So would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, my fellow commissioners are not opposed, I'm ready for a motion. All right. I would move that we adopt the staff report as part of the public record, that we make the findings in support of SPR 90-04-R2 as found on page 11 and 12 of the staff report to include that it is exempt from CEQA under guidelines Sections 15301 and 15331, that we conditionally approve SPR 90-04-R2 located at 3079 Cedar Ravine Road, both based on project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1 of the staff report dated August 20th, 2024.
I will second.
A motion and a second. Thank you both. Are you comfortable with the project description? I just want to make sure that we, everyone tonight knows what the extent of the project is and in perpetuity.
Yeah, if you want to add more language to, on that, I would not, I'd be amenable to change my motion if there's some wording you want to include in that project description.
You know, I don't.
I did forget that you mentioned that earlier, I apologize.
You know, in the conditions of approval, let's see, we are including the applicant's.
It does only say west elevation on the conditions of approval, so perhaps we want to edit the conditions on number, item number one, it does just say west elevation, so.
So, I'm sorry, I can't put my hands on that piece of paper. Can I borrow?
Sure. It does just say west elevation, so perhaps we say.
On the west, north, remove the existing, redwood railing on the west, north, west and north elevations, as well as the staircase? That way, it's very clear, the extent? Okay? I'm fine, or you are without amendment?
Absolutely. Is staff okay with that, with that wording? Does that make sense? Excellent, yeah, then I will amend my motion to include the extra wording on the conditions of approval.
I will second that amendment.
All right. Thank you for working with me on that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Just, you know, it, I appreciate, we all appreciate the effort you've gone to to make this a beautiful house, and we have full faith that you will move forward with that. I just want to make sure that we're always dotting i's and crossing t's.
Absolutely.
And so it's very clear what, what's intended, not just tonight, but in the future. All right, we have that. Ms. Hunter, would you please call the vote?
Vice Chair Carter.
Aye.
Chair Keeney.
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper.
Aye.
All right, that's a 3O approval. Congratulations, thank you very much, we appreciate your effort. As you know, there is a 10-day appeal period, but this is a wonderful project. I certainly don't anticipate anything like that, but anyway, just so that you are aware. So that is concludes item 10.2, and we'll move on to 10.3. I think at this point, perhaps Commissioner Smith can rejoin us. Great, welcome back. 10.3 is another site plan review for Apple Farm Place exterior elevation modifications and master sign plan amendment. And once again, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Hunter, for the staff report.
All right, so on July 18, 2023, the Planning Commission considered SPR 23-09 to remodel the existing retail shopping center, previously the Carriage Trade Center, now Apple Farm Place, including modifications to the building, parking layout, landscaping, color scheme, and signage. SPR 23-09 was conditionally approved on that date, and the staff report and approved plans are included as attachments 3 and 4 of your packet. In December 2023, staff became aware of deviations from the approved elevations on the site. Staff notified the property owner that the deviations constituted a major change, and that approval by the Planning Commission was required. First via stop work order in December 2023, then two letters, first sent in February 2024, and second, March 2024. Unfortunately, the project created a moving target for staff as acquiring an accurate representation of the changes, and what was proposed for approval was difficult, with each rendition of the revised elevations changing from draft to draft. Further, it became clear that the approved master sign plan for the site was too restrictive for prospective tenants and needed to be revised to permit flexibility in style, size, and materials. The revised elevations and master sign plan included as attachments 5 and 7 of the staff report were submitted on July 22 and 25, respectively. Staff prepared a comparison of the originally approved elevations and the proposed elevations provided in Attachment 2, as well as Table 1 of the staff report on pages 6 and 7. Overall, it is the opinion of staff that the project, while a major change from the previous approval, is consistent with the general plan, as the project shall promote architectural quality throughout Placerville and result in the visual enhancement of Upper Broadway. Further, the materials and colors are compatible with previous elements and the architectural style approved under SPR 23-09 for Apple Farm Place. Regarding the proposed revisions to the master sign plan, the modifications to the wall sign criteria for both minor and major tenants shall provide greater flexibility and creativity for advertising while maintaining a visually coordinated and complementary advertising environment. The addition of the under canopy. The addition of the under canopy hanging sign for each unit provides a unified method of providing business identification and direction for pedestrians. The proposed changes shall be of professional quality, provide consistent and clear advertising for each unit in the shopping center, and be internally illuminated such that the illumination would comply with section 10-4-17 requirements. The request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA guideline sections 153, sorry, section 15301, in that the project includes minor alterations to an existing private structure that shall result in no expansion of the existing use. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of the request, and conditionally approve SPR 23-09-R based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Hunter at this time? Okay. Would the applicant like to step up to the podium and say anything about the project, underscore any of the elements for us? Good evening, thank you for coming down.
Good evening, good to be here. I don't have anything in particular to say, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. I think pretty much what is in the report is self-evident on the project currently. And some of the changes, just as a kind of a little bit of background, is when you get into a project and there are certain structural elements that you didn't anticipate are there, and there were many on this project that we'll just say were relatively substandard as far as what needs to be there, and so we made some modifications, et cetera, and obviously with the help of planning and building through the project, you know what I mean, to try to make sure that the final product is one that is representative of Placerville, let's just put it that way, not what we had previously. So, in any event, happy to answer any questions. And, you know, one of, I think one of the challenges that we face in, on the east end of town, okay, and I live on the east end of town, right off of Stonecrest, okay, so I'm right across the freeway from this project, but is the challenge of attracting tenants to that end of town. And one of them happens to be here to come and support the project from the owner of the Bare Bones Workwear, which we're thrilled to have Bare Bones Workwear up here, because it really provides a great retail opportunity for people that are in the work, blue collar working industry, nurses, et cetera. But as being the developer, also the project on Missouri Flat Road, the crossings project, there's a tremendous amount of gravity that that project has for tenants, because it's more, what would I say, contemporary with respect to the community, and a lot of things have developed, if you will, west of town over the years. And so what we try to do is just make the project attainable, if you will, to tenants. As an example, the Beach Hut Deli tenant that's going, and they should be opening in probably three to four weeks. They originally came to us and wanted to be in our project on Missouri Flat, okay? And what we did, or what I did, when I met with them, met with the founder of Beach Hut, I said, listen, you know, you can go down to Missouri Flat Road and you compete with four other sandwich shops if you want. That's up to you, but all you're going to do is cut the pie up, okay? Because whether someone's at Jersey Mike's, Subway, Sour Dough, Safeway, Mr. Pickles, wherever they're at, you're going to get a smaller slice of it, or you can come to the east end, Upper Broadway, and you could have the whole west slope. And they opted to come there. So it's, the point I'm making is, it's a challenge to bring what I'll call quality tenants in that look to be a part of centers that are larger retail centers, if you will, as smaller tenants, tenant spaces. But, like I say, I believe we've been fortunate to get really good quality tenants, and we're, and we're holding out for good quality tenants to fill the rest of the place. We're not, we're not going to compromise tenant-wise what's going to be in that center. If the center's going to continue to thrive, or get to the point where it thrives, which we need some more tenants for it to thrive, especially on an economic basis. But, but the point I'm making is, we want to make it so that when, when a good quality tenant comes in, they like what they see. And, and so that's kind of where we're, where we're at, where we continue to go. So anyhow.
Well, thank you very much, and I want to say that I really am impressed and pleased with how it's turning out. I've driven by numerous times and taken a look at the improvements that you have made in that shopping center. And I appreciate what you said about your difficulty in attracting quality tenants. I, I like the revisions for the colors and textures. My only concern is, your request is for a 50% increase in the signage. And could you please, you know, just explain a little bit about that? You know, you've told us that you've had a little trouble with attracting tenants, and I think we all appreciate that, those of us who have watched the changes in that particular shopping mall over the years. And so, you know, I understand that, but I think already you have a very large, the pole sign, and then the second sign at the other end, that's a lot of signage.
Yeah, there's no change in those signs, those signs remain the way they are, the way they were.
What is the need to increase?
It's the building signs themselves, and again, when I say attracting tenants, we've got to be able to offer amenities that are commensurate with what's being offered at other projects with respect to signage.
Is this a standard that you have at other?
Oh yeah, we're actually larger than what's being presented to you on our projects down on Missouri Flat. There's larger sign bands down there on some of the buildings. It's just a matter of identity and, and being able to recognize who's there. Street side is important, okay? Not everybody knows who's in these centers when they're driving by. If they're going up to Tahoe or whatever, they happen to get off, come through Placerville, come up Main Street or onto Broadway. And so it's just very important that, from, from the standpoint of a sign that, that really is a logo at the same time for a particular tenant, i.e. bare bone signage, is not just a typical sign, it, it is their brand, that sign.
And so what I think I, I understand now is that these potential tenants come to you, and this is part of their identity. They, they want to have, they want to have more square footage to advertise their brand.
They need to have the comfort level that they're going to be seen and they can be successful where they're at. And those are the things that we compete against other centers with, as far as those amenities that we can offer. And when I say, and, and these are not, when it's all said and done, and we get the trees in and things of that nature, these signs, really, they'll be visible, but they're not going to be the most predominant thing in there right now. It's because right now, you have from Broadway to the building, no impedance with respect to view at all. That will change over time, just because landscaping is going to go in. And so it all kind of blends in that way, but it's just really important from a, I mean, I can't tell you for, these are, what are the tenants that we're working with right now are not what we would consider national tenants. If you look at the Harbor Freight sign, it's a pretty good sized sign for Harbor Freight, that's a big storefront there. They're also doing very well at that site, which, which is great to hear from my standpoint, because their success begets other tenants coming that hear that, yeah, they're doing well there. We would like to be there with them, because we can do well with them there. But we have to be able to provide to them what they would get anywhere else, in the county, if you will, for that same type of space. So that's, that's basically, basically where it's at. We're trying to, what I'll say, level the playing field when it comes to what other sites offer and what we can offer to make sure that we have, I wouldn't say an advantage, but at least a level playing field. So that's, that's really the extent of it. The signs, like I say, along Broadway, they're not changing at all, same height, same width, everything's not, not changed. But there's some signs, like as an example, when we came here originally, we didn't have Beach Hut Deli. Beach Hut Deli's sign is a surfboard. That's their logo.
Mm-hmm.
You see what I'm saying? So when you have that type of an identity, when someone drives by, they see that surfboard, they know that sandwich shop is there. They don't have, even have to read it, because that surfboard says Beach Hut. So that's the point I'm making, is these.
An example of Beach Hut Deli to, they have requested an increase in the area so that they can have that surfboard element that's, that can be seen, is that, so the?
I think it's, I think it's maybe a couple inches different in size or something like that than the standard, I don't know. Kristin, you could explain it probably better than I can.
If staff could, the original sign plan for the center was channel letters. And so Beach Hut Deli is, is more of a round sign than channel letters, and so it was a deviation which requires planning commission approval, just to make the master sign plan more flexible for tenants.
Okay. Do any other commissioners have questions for Mr. Grado?
I do. I have a quick question regarding the projecting signs, the under canopy signs. Are you, are you planning to put those on the, on the anchor stores also, or just the smaller tenants?
I'm trying to understand what you meant by under canopy sign.
These projection ones that are going.
Are we talking about on the fascia?
They're hanging underneath the canopy.
The ones that are actually in the walkway, hanging.
Oh. I don't think we have any yet.
They're called projecting signs, they're in our plan, did I miss?
Yes, they are, and they're, there's for, for all tenants, so minor and major, based on.
Okay, so you're talking about, so if someone's walking down the patio.
Yes.
They can see what's there.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, they might, we haven't been asked for one specifically yet, but, but the big thing is, we want to be able to say, yeah, that's something that you can have if they ask for it, instead of having to come back to here again and potentially delaying a tenant making a decision to come to the center, because they have to wait to have a planning commission hearing to find out if they can get that. And I think from a, from a directory standpoint, it's way safer. You know, we're getting a lot more people that are walking between the Dollar Tree and Grocery Outlet because of Harbor Freight there, the nail shop is there, and, and you have to step into the drive aisle if you're going to try to see where someone is at right now, and it'd be a lot easier, because the soffits are taller now, so they're, they're nicer. And so to have that shingle that's hanging down, it'd be tremendously helpful, you know what I mean? Especially during, during the winter and things like that, where people don't have to get out into the drive aisle and see where they're going.
Oh yeah, and the reason I asked was, you mentioned the nail salon specifically, so that particular section of the building doesn't really have a canopy that would be.
That has awnings that are going to the.
It's a lot, a lot shorter and very much more narrow, that you wouldn't be able to put those projecting signs there and still.
Understood, understood.
I was just wondering if you were, because there's really only five storefronts, Bare Bones, H&R Block, the vacant one, and then Beach Hut, those are the only ones that would really have those projecting signs as opposed, and the anchor tenants, if you're going to put them on the anchor tenants also, but I was just trying to understand the scope of those.
Yeah, there's one, Commissioner, there's one that's directly adjacent to Grocery Outlet. It's under their canopy, the new entry that we built for them, so there's one right there.
Okay.
There is the one that is what I'll call east of the, I'm trying to think, it's Nail Shop.
Beach Hut.
Beach Hut, H&R, just east of H&R Block. There's one space that's there between them and.
Oh, I thought H&R Block had both of those spots, okay.
No, they just have the one spot there, and then there's the one that's still under the canopy, just before you get to Harbor Freight. So there's about six of them, I think, totally, probably in that range.
Okay.
It's not a large number, it's just so as people are walking down that sidewalk, they'll see what's up there and, and go from there, so anyhow.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grado.
Okay, I'm here if you need me again.
Okay. Would anyone in the audience care to comment on the project? Okay, seeing no comments, I'll close the public comment portion of the review of the hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. I'll start by saying, the, the colors, the, and texture changes, I have no problem with that. You know, and I think in some respects, it's even, even nicer than what was proposed before, which, you know, we approved. I, my discomfort with the increase in signage, you know, I, I see the, the point of the location of this particular shopping district, the way the road curves around, it's, the shops are a fair distance from the road there, and so I appreciate that, you know, the tenants need to be seen, so that they, that people can locate them and recognize that brand quickly. I, I'm thinking maybe we could bolster our findings with some sort of language like that, but I want to hear what the rest of you have to say about it. Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Here's some of the concerns I have. In the past, the city's had a policy regarding pole signs and signage that they wanted to avoid, so we didn't have this Rancho Cordova kind of look. When you compare this development to what you have down at the other end of town, Missouri Flat, that's much different in a couple of respects. One is a time period when that was developed long ago.
I see the microphone is pointed away from your mouth, since we are on record, thank you.
Ground control, come in please.
So, the difference is, when you're going down Highway 50 or up Highway 50, down by Missouri Flat Road, you can see those signs. So that's much different than up here at the Apple project, where when you're driving by, it's not so visible from the freeway. That's number one. Two, the irony of sorts is that years ago, maybe a dozen, there was an effort to get rid of pole signs, including one that was on that property, where there was a restaurant, for example, and that had to be taken down. So then we're, we're now going back and doing the same thing. So I feel a little uncomfortable about giving this blanket approval when we haven't seen the specific signs that are being offered. The other thing is that what we've learned in recent years is that more and more people are getting around to find places by the phone. I use it all the time. Just Google, tell me where to find such and such. I've used it several times that way when I'm out of town to find a particular business. So that's what my reservations are, is we'd be going backwards over what had been a city policy in the past, it seems like. That's my concern.
Chair Keeney, if staff could maybe lend some comments to the signage. The first thing I think I want to just state in general, it was the urging of staff to the applicant to come in with a more flexible signage master plan package. Because the way it was moving forward is, we had the individual tenants that had, they really want to promote their business with their individual logo, and the, the original master sign plan was too restrictive. We would be coming back to you with each new tenant that had a different, you know, sign. So when you're looking at the sign in general, and what staff looked at was the scale, and, you know, staff felt that the larger tenants, like Harbor Freight or the Dollar Tree, you know, the signage isn't scaled with the building, it doesn't look outlandish, or it doesn't look out of scale. And so that's what we looked at there. So we wanted the applicant to come back with that level of flexibility. With regards to the pole signs, the pole signs are already approved, so that's not before you. We felt that the applicant took an old, let's just say, an old style pole sign, which was more literally a pole sign, where the new ones now have the, have the structure, so it's more like a very large, say, monument sign, but it's a pole sign, and it went through the whole process to be approved. So it's a much improved pole sign than what was originally there. With respect to the, the restaurant sign for, I'm trying to remember the name of that restaurant, it was, yeah, Jed's, the steakhouse. That sign was determined by the city to be an abandoned sign. So if a pole sign remains not in use for 180 days, then the city can move forward and cause that sign to be removed. And that's what happened in the case of that sign, but that was under with a different property owner. And the property owner at that time was more than happy to remove that sign. But that's, it's kind of a different thing, it's not really germane to what's before you. I just wanted to make that, those clarifications.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that when that sign was taken down because it was abandoned, referring to the restaurant, the issue was being able to raise it up again, and there already was an ordinance regarding signs. The things I repeated a moment ago actually echoed what Patty Borelli, among other council members, said about 12 to 16 years ago, about the idea that the need for signs isn't the same as what it was in the past and so on. But while that sign was taken down for that reason, the question was, could you put it back up? And the answer is, no. You have some restrictions regarding height.
Yeah, staff would agree with what, what the Commissioner Smith just said. Basically, a pole sign does require approval of the. Basically, a pole sign does require approval of additional use permit and a variance. So there's a lot of findings that must be made in order to, you know, let's just say, install a pole sign. Because it is something where, when the city went through its comprehensive sign ordinance update, that it wanted to steer away from a lot of these pole signs. And some of these pole signs, too, also were relics from when US Highway 50, basically, the route was Placerville Drive and Broadway.
Okay, so, one, I agree. I actually really like the design, how it's coming out. I think it's really great. I do spend a lot of time at that shopping center. I go to Dollar Tree all the time with my daughter to walk around because it's cheap and I don't get in too much trouble when I shop. But, and so I have walked from Dollar Tree, I've gone down to Harbor Freight, I've walked farther with her. And so I am in favor of the sign plan as proposed by staff because I do think in this particular, I'm not making a sign statement for the city of Placerville, but in this particular shopping center, I do believe they would benefit from having those over signs. Because as the gentleman stated, having to go into the street to see, it's not like Missouri Flat where if I'm standing at Target, I can see Little Caesar's. It's a straight along. And I think that having that signage down there would be helpful for navigating it and advertising for the stores that are in there. I also, so I really do think it's a safety thing, too, coming into play here of being able to see it and navigate down there. And it does get really dark down there in the winter, too. So I think having the sign, just because of the less commerce that's down there, it's kind of the end, you know, of lights and things. And so I think having signs down there won't be a bad thing. It will help with illumination. We have our illumination guidelines in play, so it's not going to impact people's enjoyment of life and the beautiful night sky. So I really just don't see, I don't see an issue, and again, this is specific to this project. So I fully understand what we're talking about when we talk about signs and whatever. I, you know, disagree with like how useful they are maybe, but, because I think they're very useful and necessary over a phone. So anyway, all of that is to say that I think that approving this sign as proposed, especially clarified by staff, that it will save us having to have them come before us. That takes time with them for tenants. I'm very sensitive to business owners in town being successful with as few barriers as possible. So for those reasons, I'm in support of the application as presented.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah. I'll start by saying I love the center. When I did my site visit, it was the first time I went into Harbor Freight, and it's awesome. So I'll start by saying I think this project has been an overall benefit for the city. I was a no vote on this project originally. I was a no vote, not because of the project, but because of the process. And I think it's illustrated perfectly in the staff report. You know, they mentioned it earlier, moving targets, inconsistent drawings, accurate representation of changes was difficult with renditions of the revised elevations changing from draft to draft. I've had issues with the process of this project from the very beginning, and that's why I voted no on it before. I think the issues that I had before have continued and are still continuing. And because of that, I'm still going to be a no vote, and not because of the project, but because of the process. I love the project, but I don't like the way this project has gone. I don't like the way that the, I mean, the inconsistency of the drawings. And then now we find out that, you know, they had to do a stop work order because they didn't follow even the elevations that we approved without communicating with the city first. They had to get a violation notice. So I was a no vote then. I'm a no vote now, now, once again, only because of the process.
I find that concerning. So the, but the, how could we get your approval? What I don't understand, I appreciate the points that you've made, and, you know, I agree. That is, it's unusual. It was unexpected that it would be an inspection that brought this to our attention, that the changes, all of the changes themselves, I think, are quite reasonable. You know, if we had something like, we eventually will have, and as built, of how it turns out. How could, how could the process have, how could we improve the process so that, you know, you would feel comfortable approving the sign package and the changes to the elevations?
I don't, and I'm, you know, trying to be careful. I don't have a lot of confidence that, no matter what the process is at this point, that it will be followed. Because, you know, the history of this project thus far has not followed the process, in my opinion. This is just my opinion. But I think it's been bared out in the staff report and in how the project has moved forward since we approved it. I cannot envision any findings or any bolstering of anything that would make me comfortable with the project because I just don't have any confidence that's going to be followed anyway. And so my concerns have carried forward from the first approval to this approval. And I think they've actually been justified. And...
But don't forget, you know, the city code enforcement did catch the violation.
Absolutely. And that is part of the process, granted. I understand that, yeah, that is correct.
You know, I appreciate, you know, we need adherence to, you know, the plans that the city planning commission approves. You're absolutely correct. But in the event that they aren't approved, then we do have recourse to compel, you know, this developer or any project proponent. We have the means to compel them to adhere to what was approved. Or, you know, if that's not possible, then to come before the planning commission with explanation for the changes. So that's kind of where we are right now. We did have the enforcement action, and Mr. Grado, you know, has resubmitted plans. And so to, you know, to my thinking, your concerns have now been satisfied.
And I found his argument to be, or his explanations to be satisfactory. I just, I stand, I guess I kind of stand behind what I said earlier. I just don't, we're once again put in a position of, you know, asking for forgiveness as opposed to permission. And I don't like this commission being put in that position. I anticipated that being the case, and I made that case earlier in the beginning, or in the first site plan review, and that's why I voted no on it to begin with because I could see the project changed while we were discussing it in a couple of occasions. And so I just, I have not been a fan of the process of this project. Once again, I think the project is wonderful, but I cannot stand behind this particular process. I understand that code enforcement is part of that. But in this case, I'm not going to be put in the position of asking for forgiveness as opposed to permission. I just think that my...
Well, that phrase, asking for forgiveness and not permission, you are correct. That comes before us for projects, large and small.
Absolutely.
And it is concerning and, you know, a bit frustrating to be put in that position. But I think it's very important for us to move things forward, especially, you know, good projects that benefit all of our citizens. We benefit from a successful, good-looking project over there on the east end of town. It provides services. It attracts just casual travelers to and from Tahoe. So, you know, it's a benefit, not just to shoppers here, but to passersby and to the city overall. So I just ask you to reconsider, you know...
Allow me to, yeah. So allow me to propose this. So if my no vote affects, like, if we cannot pass this project because of my no vote, if we have to come back and have more discussion, then let's have a more robust discussion about how to get me to where I'm comfortable. I don't know if my no vote is going to be, is going to have any effect on the approval of this project. And so if it does, then I'm willing to come back and have a more, a longer conversation about how to get me to a yes. But I don't think my no vote is going to, I don't think it's going to down this project.
Well, that's, you know, I want you to be comfortable with your vote either way. So let's, I want to think about that. I would like us to consider, take into consideration something that was said by Mr. Grado about the reason for increasing the signage. And, you know, Mr. Smith, you're right. A lot of, we use our phones. I've got my phone right here.
Well, the reason I have it on...
But we, I wanted, you know, I would like to put in our findings something that reflects the site-specific conditions we've got here. I think, Amy, you kind of hit on that. You yourself like signage. In addition to having your phone, you like to be able to look and see where you're going once you arrive at the general site. And I would like to bolster the findings somewhat with some language such that we say maybe under number three, where we say the project is consistent with the general plan, community design element, and goes on to say furthermore, the proposed amendment to the sign package would result in signage of professional quality. At the end of that paragraph, I would like us to consider adding something about the lines of, given the site-specific conditions that limit clear visibility from Broadway, the requested increase in total sign area is warranted. So that we go on record that this is a site-specific condition of getting people here where we've struggled to get tenants. We've struggled to get that end of Placerville. I mean, it's, our best choice is to have a successful, have a successful shopping center. And so I don't think that this request is undue as far as the signage. And staff has analyzed it. It is their conclusion that it's a reasonable request. But I would like to bolster our findings for this particular case. So I appreciate your consideration on that. So Ms. Labor, I think you had a comment regarding what Ryan Carter said.
Yeah, I think you made your point, and I think you have your stance. And I think it's fair what you're saying. But I think if we, I'm comfortable moving forward and making a motion, and I think what you said is fair. If it's going to hold this up, then you will consider. But if the three of us decide to pass it, then I think it's a moot point. I don't really like discussing votes ahead of time sometimes because I think it can muddy the discussion and the waters. And that's not specific to you. That's in general. But I think that at this point, I would be comfortable making a motion unless you have anything more to say about the project.
Yeah, I do. We're all in agreement. We love the project. I've heard Mr. Grado speak many times before, has great research. It's an impressive project. And I, too, have been in all those businesses, including the Harbor Freight. Again, because it's an impressive project by an impressive developer, doesn't mean we necessarily offer some of these broad openings. As Commissioner Carter pointed out, there was some discomfort in the very beginning, as I had when it came to discussing landscaping, and it was very vague. And now I'm going on the property and see what those plans were, whatever they were. But it didn't come before us that I know of. So that, so the kind of concerns you described does touch for me. But back to the signs. I understand the need for marketing to your good prospective clients that you've got this available. But I'm not clear as to why you need this blanket change versus coming back on an individual basis where someone has a logo or something else where they want to come in. Why does it, does it have to take so long? I just think that giving somebody this kind of blanket opportunity is not the best consistent standard to establish. That's why I feel uncomfortable with it. That's the reason.
Mr. Rivas, did you say that, would individual signs be coming to the planning commission for consideration in this? Or are they ministerial, or just once we agree to this, then the developer is free to do anything that fits within what's described, the square footage and so on, the blade signs?
It is staff's opinion that the revised master sign plan is appropriate for a commercial center of this size. In our ordinance, any commercial center that has three or more tenants or commercial businesses are required to have approval of a master sign plan that would come before the planning commission. So to give some gross examples, there's the, I think it's called the Creekside Place on Placerville Drive. That had probably one of the most restrictive master sign plans of any commercial center in the city. That one just allowed individual channel-wide lettering. And so there was basically no flexibility at all for new tenants to come in, especially if that tenant wants to provide a logo. There was no opportunity for showing a logo. So here, as the applicant, Mr. Grado, was saying, we have a variety of, you know, really good, high-level tenants that want to come in here and showcase their logo. And so that's why it was at staff's urging. We didn't want to come in individually for each new business with, this is typical for a commercial center. The commercial center, you know, yes, each individual tenant has its own logo, its own look, what it wants to portray to the consumer. But I think the tenant itself has an overall theme, and that's Apple Farm Place. It was more of a farm, barn kind of a theme, agriculture. That's why we see these colors, and that's why we have this particular signage. And so we feel that this is most appropriate for this large center, just like all the other master sign plans that get approved for the center. Some of the changes that we've made, that we haven't done in the past, is we're putting more of the onus on the property owner, not the individual tenant. What we've seen in the past is it becomes a battle between the tenant and city staff as opposed to the commercial center owner that should be the first reviewer of that sign package as being submitted for the new tenant. And so we're putting that on the property owner so that it's not us battling the evil tenants. We've seen in other centers. The only comment I want to make, too, is, I mean, we were trying to be, we did want to have a level of flexibility, but not be just, allow anything goes. And so we had a difficult time seeing some of the earlier versions, the drafts that came before us for the revisions. They were trying to modify how we measure signage. So for example, the back, you know, the backing that a sign may go on, well, that's included in the dimensioning of the signs. When we're calculating it, that it's in accordance with the minimum and the maximums that are allowed. And what would trigger then that we want to have in here, to allow larger signage. And that's why, that's one of the conditions that we put in here, that we want that deleted because a master sign plan is really looking at just the signage. They can't come in and then modify something as basic in our code as how we measure a sign. Something like that. But I hope that's helpful to you. There were some other comments about the landscaping. Just to recollect, that the applicant did not have to put in any landscaping. That was voluntary because this is an existing parking lot. And so from staff's perspective, I think the city's perspective, we're extremely grateful that we had a, you know, in-town person with, you know, the tie, you know, lives in the community, ties to the community, not living somewhere else like some of our other owners, where they don't really, it's more of what's the bottom line. Where here, we do have an applicant that's, you know, vested in the community, and staff agrees. And that's why we come before you with a recommendation for approval. And the last comment I want to make, I think it's very, very important to understand this process that, yes, the city staff will take appropriate enforcement action. If there's something that we feel is inappropriate or in violation, we do that. But I think we need to move beyond that, that I think what's before you is, do you approve of these revisions to what was originally approved? Not that they did some violations, because we will go after that and enforce. The applicant could disagree. They could appeal. There's the whole process to move forward if he felt that, you know, there was a sign violation that he wanted to maintain that was way out of, say, what staff would even approve. I think what Commissioner Carter was referring to, and this happens a lot, is somebody will construct something that's very much in violation of the city code. Staff is going to recommend disapproval of it. They're thinking that, oh, they're going to be what I call THC, or MHK, milk of human kindness. So in other words, they'll plead their case and they'll, well... other words, they'll plead their case and they'll, well, I already built it and spent all this money. I want to be able to do this. Well, staff will recommend denial. And hopefully we don't have MHK. But I think in this case, we don't have MHK. We have, you know, we have a support of a project that really turned around a poor portion of our community.
Well, thank you very much, Pierre. Oh, Kristen, go ahead.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is you had a question about whether or not it would become ministerial. That's to approve signs. That is staff's intent because it does take a lot of staff time and effort to bring each individual application before you for consideration. And it muddies the, the record of the property, so many applications on one site. So yes, it's the intent that once the criteria is approved or modified, that it would be ministerial through a building permit.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just add that, as Ms. Hunter said, that a building permit is required for all signage so that they submit the plans of the sign, its dimensions, how it looks. And then we examine to make sure it conforms with the approved master sign plan.
I think, you know, we really benefit from your extensive experience here and then also your perspective too on, you know, what staff's level of analysis is and where you will take it from here, once there is a master sign plan in place. And thank you too for, you know, walking us through this code enforcement approval process. And, you know, the process may be flawed, but, you know, we have to remember that we do have a process. And if there is a violation, there is a means to rectify that problem. So I'm hoping that that somehow switches your concerns, Ryan. But anyway, any other comments from other commissioners at this time?
Again, my discomfort is what I experienced the last time when there were questions asked about the landscaping and about whether there'd be canopies over car parking as we have other, and the response was kind of vague. So now I go to the property, as attractive as it is, and I see those kind of things being implemented. It just, just seemed too vague before. And that's what prompts the discomfort now, is I don't see the reason we can't come back and, and do this individually. And if it turns out that we have a whole bunch of them at the time, then we can reconsider this at another, later date. But I just feel uncomfortable giving this blanket consideration license based on the idea that, well, we like what this person has done, it's attractive, it's long overdue, et cetera. I want consistency. And I think that's important.
I think the, that's, the purpose of the master sign plan, that's, that's what is before us, is to approve that. And then, as was described, then each individual is reviewed at a staff level. But we, the planning commission have given staff that direction of the limits of, of the signage that can be at any, you know, given site. That's, that's the purpose that I see of the master sign plan. And I know you are concerned about that landscaping, but keep in mind, that was a, an additional thing, a voluntary thing offered by Mr. Grado to improve the overall look. And the only requirement we act as is, once it is installed, that the city be provided with an as-built and a landscape maintenance agreement in the event that the, the property changes hands. Then the city has a reference point so that, you know, it, it can be maintained in perpetuity. As it stands now, there, there are the rather mature trees on the, what is it, the west side along the roadway. But that's pretty much the, the limit of, of the landscaping. And so I, I hope that that takes care of your concern about that, that the city will eventually have that, that diagram.
Yes, the city will be receiving a final landscaping and irrigation plan for approval. And then a landscape maintenance agreement would be entered into between the property owner and the city.
I think it's important to maintain perspective too here. It's very close. So it's not like they said one thing and built an orange spaceship. So we're, we're pretty close in where we're, where we're ending up. So I think that's really important to maintain perspective on this as well, is that this is, yes, there's, there's differences. And when you first read them, there's a lot. But then you really look at them and it's not a big deal. So if it was a big deal, I would, I understand. But to me, it's pretty close. And I actually really like the changes. It looks really great. And, and I, I'm not in favor of having staff bring us the signs each time because I think most of them are going to be the preset logo that's probably used in other places, that's not offensive, that staff has the eye and the parameters as you described.
We have approved the, the design for the two monument signs or pole signs at either end. So that was the last time. This is, what we're adding on is the allowable square, square area per sign based on frontage.
Well, with that, would you be, I would, I would like to make a motion.
Yes.
If anyone else is.
Please.
Okay. All right. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the staff report as part of the public record, that we make the following findings in support of SPR 23-09-R, as listed on page 10 of the staff report, numbers one through five. And I have a change for number three. So I would like to have the final sentence of that read. Furthermore, the proposed amendment to the sign package would result in signage of professional quality, logical placement on the shopping center, provide adequate signage for each business, and increase safety for customers. Given the site-specific conditions regarding sign visibility, the requested increase in total sign area is warranted. Is that sufficient for covering what we discussed with regards to signs? Okay, great. And then the third is to conditionally approve SPR 23-09-R located at 1426 through 1480 Broadway, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one of the staff report dated August 20th, 2024. And we have no changes to the conditions. And that is my motion.
Thank you very much. I will second the motion.
Great.
Any further comments or discussion of the motion as proposed? Okay. Ms. Hunter, please call the vote.
Vice Chair Carter? Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepre?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Abstain.
All right. So the vote is three, three O with an abstention. Thank you very much, everyone. And again, Mr. Grado, thank you for coming down here. I think you have heard all of our concerns and we appreciate your, your patience. And since the project did pass, or the proposal did press, three, three O, you have our approval. And of course, as you know, there is a 10-day appeal period for.
Can I make a quick call?
I think, sure.
Right. Just two minutes.
Is, I have that discretion? Okay. We, we normally, once we close, come, that.
No, I appreciate it. I appreciate the affirmative vote for it. I just wanted to share just a little bit about the uniqueness of this center when it comes to signage, if you will. As an example, the Bare Bones Tenant Suite is a 30-foot wide by 100 feet deep suite. So signage can look different on something that's that narrow. Typically, a, a new build tenant suite is 55 feet deep, or 60 feet deep by 50 feet wide. So when you have that proportion, signage looks very different on the building. As an example, the beach hut, the beach hut actually takes three spaces, two that we combined, and then the patio space. Their sign only goes over one space. So you're going to see, you're going to see quite a void in the front of the building until you see the beach hut sign. Because it's over one suite that's actually part of their interior space. So, you know, some of these suites are 40 feet deep, 16 feet wide. There's a whole plethora of size suites that we have to deal with, with the leasing. And there's three things when we get a tenant that's interested that they ask for. LOD, which is layout design of the suite. A site plan, four things, a floor plan and a sign plan. The four things they ask for before they begin to negotiate for, for a project. They want to see what's the criteria, what are the constraints. And so that's, like I say, this is going to be very beneficial. Because when we can give people information, it's very helpful through the process.
Well, thank you very much. And as you heard, we all are just deeply appreciative of what you've done with that formerly underutilized area in our town.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay. We have one more.
Chair Keeney, if we could ask for a five-minute break.
Sure. Let's take, now that we've finished with all that, we'll take a five-minute break.
These are yours, right? These are yours? Are these your edits? These are your edits?
No.
No?
I believe they're Michael Friends.
Oh, no, I didn't get a chance to actually fully edit the memo.
I thought that was you.
No, I thought they were you.
I realized after I put in the packet, I got all of Chris, and I, I should have identified it.
So it's Michael?
It's Michael.
Oh, okay, okay, cool, cool.
All right. So we're back in session now. It is 7:49. After a short break, we're all back here at the dais. And we'll continue with, moving along with our agenda. We have no continued items, nor do we have any new business. So we'll move on to 13, which is matters from commissioners and staff. And first is 13.1, staff reports. So any matters from staff?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Keeney. What I'd like to do is, is spend a little time going over the Planning Division. It's entitled, Planning Division, August 2024, ongoing project list. And then we have, on the backside, we have a full list of all the projects that are in our queue. I think it's important for the commissioners to understand. And mind you, I gave a very similar presentation to the city council because we're, you know, the budget has been tight. One of our positions in our department was frozen and is not being filled. And so staff is spread very, very thin. And so we just want to make sure that all the players are cognizant of these staff constraints. And so looking at page one, what you have there is a brief description. You have the application number and a brief description of all the various projects that are currently being processed. And so you can see there's quite a few. I haven't counted how many there are, but you can see, starting at the top, we have a, we have what's called a certificate of compliance. That's an application where we're, we're making sure that a parcel was created in, in compliance with the subdivision map act. Typically, if a parcel was gifted or created prior to March 4th, 1972, it's a legal parcel. And typically, we can have the county surveyor's office affirm that and issue a clear certificate. But if it's a conditional certificate of compliance, one that was maybe created in violation of the subdivision map act that the state had approved back in that time, that gives the city the ability to add conditions of approval. So we can treat it like a parcel map. In other words, we can get frontage improvements and impose other requirements that we would otherwise had it been a submitted parcel map. Going on the next one, we have a conditional use permit, site plan review. And that's for the Cornerstone House of Prayer on Smith Flat Road. That's the former Hangtown Grange Hall that has been sold and purchased by the church. And that's a residential zone and a church in the, in that particular zone requires a conditional use permit and also requires site plan reviews. That'll be coming before you. The next one, it's a general plan amendment, together with a zone change, a tentative parcel map, and a lot line adjustment. So these are for properties that are located on Stonecrest. And so again, a very, very involved project. It's actually, you wouldn't really consider too complicated a project per se. But the process and the mechanisms that we go through are a little bit more complex because they start at a general plan level. So that will be one that'll come before you as well. Now, that, that one senses a general plan amendment and a, and a zone change. Those are legislative acts. And so you would be making recommendations on the project as a whole, but it'll eventually end up with the city council, because only the city council could then do the final approval of a general plan amendment and a zone change. The next two are lot line adjustments, a little bit easier. We do have one for the EID headquarters, where they're making some minor adjustments to their lot lines. And then we do have a lot line adjustment for the Apple Farm Place. So basically, it used to be in the past that you could have a property line bisect the building. That's not, that's not permitted anymore. So typically, we catch those when we have a, some kind of development application, or somebody's redoing their building or whatever. And that'll be a requirement, along with a building permit. So in this case, in Apple Farm Place, they will reconfigure what turned out to be four legal parcels. And the surveyor's office confirmed that. But they will then reconfigure those to three parcels. And so they'll be adjusted appropriately. And they'll be, also be creating another pad in that parking lot for a future, maybe a fast food restaurant or some other use in there as well. We have a PPR. That's what we call a preliminary plan review. And that's where, usually we have a larger project that may have a lot of moving parts to it, a little more sophisticated. Rather than cause an applicant to submit the formal application, we typically recommend on the more complicated projects to go through a preliminary plan review, where we could give that applicant just a clear roadmap on any hurdles. We can catch any fatal flaws. Maybe it's something that just couldn't go forward anyway. And that's to prevent them from spending a lot of money on engineering work, surveying work, and what have you on a project that may not fly. But at least it gives them a good feeling of whether the project will be successful or not. So this one is on the Sierra Animal Hospital facility there on Green Valley Road. They're expanding. They're an existing facility. Gosh, I took my cat there for 16, 17 years. There, it's a great place. So we're happy to see they're expanding. She's retired though, the vet that I had. The next one, the MA, that's a map amendment of a parcel map building envelope, open space easement. That's within the Quartz Mountain subdivision off of Bedford. Let's see, the next one, site plan review. That's the amendment to the Taco Bell exterior and site plan. Then the next one down, we got another site plan review and a variance. And that's looking at modifying existing elevations in the site plan for 564 Main Street. This would include a master sign plan, parking, outside seating, and a variance to reduce onsite parking. So again, these are very complex projects. I mean, you see the staff reports that we bring to you. We have to do a full analysis. So that provides you, the commission, with the comfort zone of having all the information that, at least we feel, that is necessary for you to make an informed decision. The next one, a site plan review, that's a, that's another historic review within the Cedar Ravine Historic District, removing deck and railings. We've got another one, site plan review, parking lot revision. And this one is to memorialize a new exterior facade of a commercial building, 416, 426 Placerville Drive. That's a property that has that little coffee shop on there. Again, that's one we had a lot of problems with as, as we went through in our last item. We had a situation where the project grew and grew to an extent to where they were proceeding without the appropriate permits. The problem we see on this one is because of the widening of Placerville Drive, they're, it's going to eliminate the parking in the front of the building. And they went ahead and created a parking lot in the back of the building. Well, any new parking lot requires a conditional use permit, site plan review by this commission. And so we will become, actually, in this case, would just be a site plan review. But the big issue we have on this one is the, the, the little coffee hut. If you, if you've seen the queuing, sometimes the cars queuing, either they're starting to stretch out on the Placerville Drive or they're completely in front of the other buildings. And so we're requiring them to get to create or to pursue a parking study to demonstrate how the queuing is going to work and how they're going to eliminate any conflict now that the parking is in the back of the building. So this is one where you proceed without the appropriate review and approvals. You run in a little hot water. I'm, I'm still scratching my head on how they're going to figure that out. But they're going to have to hire a designer, you know, a traffic engineer. They have to figure out how that queuing is going to work. They may have to move the coffee house. We're not sure. But again, this is just to show you what's involved with these projects. The next one, let's see, it's a site plan review. It's a revision to signage for the Placerville Co-op. Again, this is an after-the-fact. Oops. Oops, we didn't know we needed a permit for signage that was put up, both without a building permit and without a amendment to their sign plan. So that'll come before you. The next one, revision elevation, Apple Farm Place, master sign plan. Thank you very much. We're passed through that one now. Let's see, site plan review, 2404, within a commercial zone. Can't really recall what one that is. Cornell. Okay. Let's see, the next one, historic review for exterior modifications, 3066 Cedar Ravine Road. Historic review for the exterior modifications, 2895 Bedford Avenue. See, we get a lot of those historic review ones. And again, you could see to the extent of the staff analysis, the findings required and everything, very time-consuming. Then we're running in the ZCs. Those are zoning ordinance changes. So we have a city initiated text amendment to the zoning code regarding sign regulations. And you recall, we came before the commission for you to make recommendations of the council. And so we will come back to you then with draft regulations to allow, to some extent, A-Board or sandwich board signs within city sidewalks, and it's only for the sidewalks. The next one, we have city-initiated text amendments to clarify zoning ordinance regarding a commercial zone. I think, I'm trying to recall, that one has not come to you yet, but basically, what's that? Oh, it has, okay, so that one's over. So it has to go to, yes, in fact, it did come to you. You approved it. You made a recommendation to city council. It's on its way to the city council. The next one, we have, it's a housing element implementation programs, family daycare. There's a number, it's important to remember, too, that we did adopt the new, our housing element to the general plan. It's good through 2029, but it does have a number of programs in it that we have to implement, and some of those are amending our codes to comply with state health and safety code or state planning law. So we'll continue to do that. Those are things that we are required to do. The next one has to do, again, with the housing element, and this is regarding supportive housing. And I think all of those are going and now slated to go to council, hopefully at our next meeting for approval. Going on to page two, let's see, we have zone change 2405. That's again, in implementation of our housing element. That has to do with the density bonus. And then the last zone change we have is text amendments to address hosted short-term rentals within single-family residential zones. So it is a consensus that we wouldn't be losing housing inventory if somebody is permitted to have or host where they're actually living in the house to host it as a short-term rental. So we'll be moving forward with that as well. And then I'll move on to what we were just characterizing as anticipated or ongoing projects. We have the Mallard Affordable Housing Project and the Middletown Affordable Housing Project. Just so the commission is aware, those are extremely time-consuming. Those are both federally and state-funded projects, and the city is administering and managing those funds. We have both community development block grant funds for both of those. We have infill infrastructure grant fundings to cover the cost of the infrastructure to support the projects. We have, we also have the CPLHA funding to support the pre-construction, so that would be architectural, engineering. And then they have also this MHP. Fortunately, we don't have to administer that. That's through another nonprofit that handles that, to provide for the funding of the actual construction of the buildings. Then we have the Clementine Affordable Housing Project. Now, that is a State of California project. That's back when Governor Newsom issued a directive to state agencies to find surplus property that may be suitable for affordable housing. And so in the city of Placerville, we had the Placerville Armory, and that armory was determined by the state to be suitable for affordable housing, and they issued an RFP, and Jamboree Housing was awarded the contract to pursue another affordable housing project. So with these three projects, I am happy to announce that the city will successfully provide for its RENA, its fair share of housing, in the low and very low income categories, which is a real feather in the city's cap, because aside from these apartment complexes, city hasn't built an apartment complex in well over 20 years. So this is nice. It's good to see this growth. We have a lot of service businesses in the city, and I guess with the exception of fast food, that get $20 an hour, still, there's a lot of other folks there that are having a difficult time finding affordable housing in the city. We have the Ridge at Orchard Hill, Phase Two, so aside from the Mallard, which also is within the Ridge at Orchard Hill, up on top, there's a vacant parcel where we've been working with a housing developer to put in 68 single-family lots up there. And these homes will be from, say, averaging 1,400 to 1,600 square feet, and be more affordable to what we call the missing middle, and hopefully, there'll be more entry-level housing for people. We have the Estonia Estates. Now, that's a sad one, because I think I was on the planning commission back in the late 1990s when that one first came to the city, and it was called Placerville Estates. It's a 39 lot, single-family residential subdivision. You access it by going the Broadway to the very east end of town, the Texerna, and the property lies just below the airport. And that project was, has been mass pad graded, and we had, it was called New Phase, and they were looking at trying to develop the project. And I think there was an issue with actually funding it, and so it went essentially belly up. I think the company has been reconstituted, I guess is the best way to put it, so we've been working with new players, and they're looking, trying to resurrect the project. The unfortunate side is the tentative map expired. So that map was alive for a long time, so through the Great Recession, when the State of California kept passing different laws to extend the life of projects, parcel maps, and tentative maps in particular. This one was on the books for a long time, but could not make it. So they will have to resubmit and go through the process anew, and so if they do submit, that will come before you as a new tentative map. The O'Bourn subdivision, that's a brand-new one. We did a preliminary plan review for that. They're looking at 49 single-family residential lots, and that is directly east of Cottonwood Phases Four and Six, so that would actually connect. So those of you who may be driven into Cottonwood Four and Six, just have a look, see what it looks like. We're pretty happy with it. If you turn on Utah, Utah dead ends. Well, that will connect to this new subdivision if it moves forward, so we're happy about that. This will provide for better connections and improved circulation in the area. Moving down to the next section is ordinances. I think we covered some of those. So just a quick list of some of the ordinances that we're going to be working on or are working on. Of course, the A-Board sandwich sign regulations. We have the front yard uses, fence heights regulations. That one has been put on the back burner for way too long, so we're really committed to bring that forward, actually, to the city council. So that already went through the planning commission in the past, and so we'll be bringing that to the council, hopefully, to get that done. Essentially, it's sort of interesting. Their staff receives a lot of complaint about the front yard becoming a junkyard, or people using their front yard for, say, storage of materials, sea land containers, that kind of thing. So it's a place, a little bit more restrictions on how the use of the front yard is to be used. And another interesting thing is the fence heights regulations. For whatever reason, the city of Placerville will allow a solid fence up to six feet in height along the front yard. No other city, no other county allows that. Typically, what you see is 30 to 36 inches above ground can be solid, and then you can go up to six feet, but it has to be 50% open, and that's typical. So it's the staff's assumption that at some time in the distant past, when the city essentially borrowed much of El Dorado County's ordinance, because it used to look very, almost identical, that that was just an inadvertent left off the code, and so we want to bring that forward. That was fraught with a lot of opposition. A lot of people basically said that, well, we moved up here because we wanted to be able to do, more or less, be free to use our property as we will, and we just tried to explain that, well, we are a city. The city has a little tighter restrictions. The best example I can give you of what, if you saw a rapid increase of six-foot-high solid fences, drive down Combellic, where it connects with Middletown, those new subdivisions, the Deer Crossing and stuff, those are side yards. So if you drive into the actual subdivisions, you don't see this fence. But imagine if we started seeing all our residential areas walled off like that, and that's the purpose for that. Plus, there's law enforcement. They want to be able to see what's going on before they enter a property where there's a call of some issue, emergency. So that's a little bit on that. Subdivision ordinance updates. So our current subdivision ordinance, both for subdivisions and for parcel maps, are grossly outdated. I think some of the, most of the subdivision ordinances date back, older than I am, dates back to the early 1950s, if you can believe it. I think I saw the date, 1954, there, and so we really need to get that up to date, especially with new subdivisions that might be coming forward. We need an updated ordinance to which to apply current regulations. The next two, those were problemated through a grant that our police department received, and so we have draft tobacco retail ordinance and draft tobacco smoking ordinance. Those won't come to the planning commission. They're separate from sort of a, you know, a planning type of issue, but they're within our department to move forward, so we'll be taking those draft ordinances to the city council, but just to make you aware that those are out there. The next one is the ag/commercial zone district ordinance. We have in our general plan an ag/commercial zone land use designation, but no corresponding zoning district. And the issue we see here is the city anticipates the annexation of the Smith Flat area, which has some of that ag/commercial land use designation applied to it. And so we need to have an implementing zoning ordinance, which will be, which will very much mirror that, but that will come before you for consideration and recommendation to the city council. And last but not least, there's the downtown commercial historic district. So as you probably recall, when we had an historical advisory committee, that historical advisory committee spent a large amount of time delineating the boundaries of that district, and so that district then will come before you as a recommendation from them to provide for the city council. So we hope to bring that to you sometime in the near future.
Sidewalk vending.
Oh, yeah, sidewalk vending. I'll add that. We have a lot. So just real briefly on some other non-applications miscellaneous, this is some of the typical work we do. We have our, what we always call a MLO, annual report to the Department of Water Resources. We're now required to report to them all landscaping that's over 500 square feet and that they're complying with our conservation of water. We have our housing element annual progress report that we're required to submit to HCD every year, and that is required. We can't neglect it because it could harm our chances of getting grants. We have the water rights annual report to the Department of Water Resources. The city of Placerville has two water rights, one for Big Canyon Creek that runs through Goldbug Park, and then we have Lumpston Park, which has the pond. So we have water rights to use that water for mainly recreational purposes, but we have to submit a report every year on that. We have our solid waste program. So the developments services department is, does oversee our solid waste program, so we work closely with CalRecycle. We have AB 1383, and we have 1826, requiring the separation of recyclables from trash, and now we have organics, and then food waste. So we oversee that. Of course, you understand we're under franchise agreement with El Dorado Disposal, and that franchise agreement has to be updated to bring in, in conformism with new state regulations. It's never-ending. But that's another thing that you may not have been aware, that our department is responsible for overseeing and implementing. Update of the city's general plan safety element. That's something that was required under state law. Whenever you update your housing element, you also have to look at your safety element. So we're doing that. CalFire is assisting us. Of course, the county is assisting us. There's a lot of different plans for evacuations and defensible space. All that will be incorporated or referenced in the new safety element update. And then we have the update of the city's traffic impact mitigation fee program. That's mainly being headed by our engineering department, but the planning division has a big role in inputs to the modeling. So in other words, a vacant land, what's it zoned, what's the ultimate development so we can determine in some planning time horizon, which is a 20-year planning time horizon for the TIMFEI program, what sort of traffic is going to be generated so that we can determine what improvements need to be made to maintain a level of traffic flow in the city? And then we then apply, based on the trip generation of projects, an impact fee. Let's see, and then I've added a couple others that I neglected to put on here. We'll be updating the city's hazardous vegetation and combustible materials ordinance. The city or the county just adopted their update, I think, just a week or so ago, quite recently, and so ours will mirror a lot of that ordinance as well. Our current original ordinance also mirrored the county's previous ordinance, and that's in working with El Dorado County Fire Protection District so that, you know, they're not looking at a totally different set of rules for what's in the city versus in the county. Private sewer lateral ordinance, we're going to, that was recently adopted, but we want to revise that. Mainly, I've been working with the El Dorado County Real Estate, Realtors Association, and so the problem they were having is our ordinance requires that during transfer of title, that inspection be made of the lateral, both the lateral from the building to the sewer main, or if there's a private sewer collection lateral, that that also be inspected. And so there's nothing in, there's nothing in the point-of-sale that says that it should be a disclosure when title transfers, so I've been working with the Realtors to put that in. And so it's a simple fix, but it'll be a way of ensuring that that gets done in accordance with our code. I also included here PEAK, the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee. The department does provide staffing for that committee, and they meet on the second Friday of each month at 12 noon here in this building, if any of you are interested in that committee and what they do. But again, we do support that committee. Code enforcement, of course, code enforcement is in our department, and fortunately, we do have a staff person that works full-time helping us with that. But with anything, it's a lot of, it's a lot of staff time. It's a lot of staff time for the planning division or the building division, depending upon whether it's a building violation or a planning or a land use violation. So we have, gosh, I don't even know how many, probably close to several hundred outstanding code violations that we're working on at any given time. And of course, we're in the fire season, so a lot of the code enforcement issues have to do with dead and dying trees or other fire hazards that we see or brought to our attention, and we try and get on those. They're a top priority with the community. And then the last one that Kristen brought to my attention is a sidewalk vending ordinance. So we've been seeing vendors, mainly fruit vendors, on some of our corners. We get a lot of complaints about that. So the state of California passed a law that basically says that a jurisdiction must allow sidewalk vending, but you're allowed to regulate it. And so we can't give a full-out prohibition, but we can have, we want to require an administrative permit, so we're not blocking the sidewalk. But with respect to agricultural products, we've been working closely with the El Dorado County Ag Department, and the problem there is a lot of these people that you see in those corners are being exploited. They're probably selling stolen fruit or fruit that they don't have the right to sell in the first place, and so we'll put additional ordinances or additional regulations to ensure that we can check that they have appropriate documentation showing that they're legally able to sell the fruit and vegetable. able to sell the fruit and vegetables, that kind of a thing. So that concludes my, well, I don't know how brief it was, but sort of an outline. There's a lot of other stuff we do administratively and everything else. We support all the other county departments when we're needed. Uh, if the city is doing a project, of course, the city oversees the building permit aspect of it to make sure it's complying with building codes. But I wanted the commission to understand that our workload is well beyond what our staffing level allows. And so, uh, we, we do overtime sometimes and that has to be approved by, by me as a department head. And so a lot of times the overtime is for support of say this commission or other priorities, not for more frivolous things. We just don't have the staffing to do it. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on any of the items that I briefly went over.
Thank you, Pierre. That is extensive and, uh, you know, I kinda had lost sight of how, um, how many things you, uh, you know, have to, how many balls you have juggling in the air. So, uh, yeah, it is, uh, it's a lot of work. Anybody else have a question or a comment about the, um, projects?
Several. Uh, when you talk about the, the fencing, six feet tall, uh, in some areas where you have gardens and you want to keep deer out, that can be helpful. There's other instances where you have a swimming pool and you want some privacy, so that's another factor. Should be interesting to handle. But I guess one of the questions is about the, uh, that I didn't hear on your list was these ordinances related to short-term housing, rental properties. That was discussed before we had a hearing on it. What's the status of that?
So the status of that is we will be bringing to, to you, to this commission, a draft set of regulations on hosted short-term rentals.
Okay. What, what timeframe would that be?
It's really hard to say. Uh, again, that's probably a little lower on the priorities than some of these other items where they're state mandated or they're council-directed ordinances that are of high priority.
Cause one thing that might, might help you.
Or applicants. Remember, the most important, uh, most important person is the person that comes to our counter, lays money down and submits an application. We're obligated to process that application.
Good.
So that's top priority.
The, uh, one thing that might help for workload is you, you have an advisory committee here on some of the things and one of them that we looked at for the last 16 months was the historic district downtown. That was on our list, so we spent a lot of time on that. That might help to actually have us implement that first and that could save you some time.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand what you mean. Basically, we'll be bringing to you, that's in the, that's currently in our general plan. The, the general plan directs the city to, uh, create a downtown historic district. So we'll be moving forward with that. We went through the historic advisory committee that prepared a draft map. And so the next step is to come to this commission to review the historic advisory committee's recommendation on the boundaries of that historic district and make a recommendation then to the city council. And we'll have then a fifth historic district in the city.
Yeah, it'll be processed as a zone change. So it would be a staff level item. We couldn't, we couldn't give that to the special committee.
You couldn't?
No. That's an amendment of our, our zoning ordinance. So we could, we'd have to do with that. And then as the planning commission, you can make recommendations to the city council.
And real quick, Chair, if I may, I want to address, um, what, um, Commissioner Smith was saying about the fence height. So the ordinance change would only look at the front yard fence, not the sides and not the rear. And so, uh, fences are allowed up to six-feet height. If you exceed, if you go above seven feet in heights, then it requires a building permit. Uh, so there's that in-between. I know the county modified their ordinance now where you can go up to seven feet. But if you wanted to, for, for some reason, you feel you needed to have a solid fence in the front yard, there's always the variance application process where the property owner can make their, um, justification for having something different than the code. So there is a way, you know, around that wouldn't be absolute.
I guess the other thing to ask for is about the, uh, uh, the, the bylaws that normally comes up every year. I asked for it to be on the agenda. When's it gonna come up? I asked for it to be on the agenda this time. When's it gonna be up?
Yeah, we'll, we'll try and get that to you as quickly as possible, but again, look at the amount of work that we did for this agenda and overtime was put into this agenda. We still have to work with our city attorney. There were some of the changes made, just didn't fly with our city attorney. So it's gonna be a little more time-consuming. My recommendation to you is, is I would not be so concerned about the bylaws unless you see that there's a clear issue where it's preventing you from carrying out your duties.
The, uh, what, well, one of them was proposed about 16 months ago, which was, uh, in the instance of we have, uh, like the city council has some measures where it says that you have a, uh, majority of, uh, a quorum. So if you have three people show up, uh, that means you could have two persons who decided a matter. And so the city council bylaws correct that. They have a couple provisions related to what kind of matters require you to have, you know, a, a full, uh, quorum. So that's one of the things that was proposed by, uh, you know, Commissioner Carter way in the very beginning. So that's an example.
Very good.
Okay. Um, any other questions or comments for staff on the, uh, the projects list? Good luck. Thank you. Keep up the good work. We'll move on to 3.2 Planning Commission Matters. And under this item, we have the Special Committee Report by the Historic Review Special Committee.
I actually, is, is there gonna be in, uh, when's the next planning commission meeting? I'm sorry. Typically, we talk about that in that last item and I forgot to ask.
September 3rd.
Okay.
September 3rd?
September 3rd.
Okay.
That affects the next item, so I wanted to make sure that, yeah, thank you.
And, uh, so I'd, I'd like to see if we can, um, make some forward progress on this. Uh, we have, um, there were two things provided in our packet and one is from Amy Lepper, her comments on it. And I appreciate your hard work on this, kinda distilling a lot of our conversations into, um, some immediate priorities. And, um, so, um, we have that to consider and discuss. And then the other, um, Ms. Hunter, the, um, we received a red line version of, of the March 13th, 2024, um, submittal from, uh, Ryan Carter and Kirk Smith. So, uh, tell us a little bit about how this came to be. This is submitted by?
Commissioner Friend.
This is from, uh, so this is Commissioner Friend's comments on the original memorandum. Okay. Um, I think the first thing I, I'd like to ask fellow commissioners, if you're interested in making some progress tonight, uh, on these, uh, two documents we have before us.
I can, I can try to be brief, which is gonna be a challenge. I, I think the suggestions regarding editorial matters are always important and we'll be glad to do them. Uh, regarding some of the specific things like you described, uh, the way you do a, uh, an update of the inventory, trust me, we spent a lot of time and it's really complicated. It took $10,000 30 years ago to do that and that was on the cheap and it was not done well. The people who prepared it said it was only a start. So that just gives you an idea about how complex it is. The most important thing to convey to you is, and for us, I can just speak for the two of us, that we don't want to alter, is we believe very strongly that you need to have workshops. And of all of the topics that we listed, the most important is related to the, uh, the guidelines. That's absolutely crucial. You can't go on to these other matters. Like you may want to go on to the subject of the downtown, uh, historic district. Should there be an historic district? Yeah, it may be on the agenda, but I'll tell you right now, it's gonna likely get defeated. Commissioner, uh, Carter's pointed out the concerns about that before, but I can tell you that, uh, city council member John Corici has said that he opposes it. And he cites as an example that, uh, his explanation is that it's opposed by property owners downtown. And he's a very savvy guy and I think he's, you know, correct. It doesn't matter which ones, but we know of merchants we can cite. And the reason is two things. One, the guidelines are very strict. The downtown area is a real hodgepodge. Just to give you an illustration of the kind of fears that people have is a property that's outside the city, but it's covered by different standards and that's the Boger Winery Tasting Room. That's covered by the historic, uh, the National Registry. What Lexi Boger said is that when they needed, they needed modifications, they had to bring a stone carver from Italy, just like they did for the National Cathedral. That's how strict that is. Downtown, if you look at the, uh, the, uh, Enchanted Forest, on the right, those are solid blocks of plaster stone. And then on the other side, it's been modified. So if they had to, if, if they had to make some modification, where would you go to get that kind of material? There are some buildings downtown that have iron roofs that you're not gonna find elsewhere because of the fires of 1852 to 1854. So if they had to modify those roofs, those kind of property owners are concerned about what kind of standards would they be stuck with? There's also tin roofs and I actually had a merchant tell me about this.
Kirk, you know, I, I want us to focus in on the, uh, report that we have in front of us. And, um, you know, you're, you're bringing up some really important, uh, specific elements. And I'd like to step back and take a more general view, especially in light of, uh, the two documents that we have in our packet tonight. Um, so to, to your first point, um, I think that came through in the original version of the memo, uh, how important the workshops are. And, um, you know, we just saw a list of all the work that, um, you know, our, um, department is, has before them already. And we've heard also that how expensive it is even to put on a, you know, what we would consider more informal workshop. I don't think we should discount the importance of those workshops. So, um, but I think what, um, in Amy's summary, uh, what I, I read this as discussions we've had, uh, keeping the workshop idea, you know, in mind, things that the planning commission could take on, uh, given the fact that we have, you know, restricted budgets and, and that we have a, a desire to move forward and, and, uh, you know, take some action on this subject. But perhaps I'm putting the cart before the horse. Uh, the way I kind of see this, uh, and what I'm looking for tonight is it, it sounds like we generally are in agreement to, we would like to move forward. Let's take a look at what Michael Friend, uh, how he edited the original memo. I have some very minor changes to that. I think, uh, you know, the, the first draft that we saw that you submitted back in March was quite good. You summarized, um, all of the, um, important elements. And, um, what he has done, it appears to me is, uh, you know, added some of his thoughts to it and rearranged things. And, uh, he maintains the importance again of, of the workshops, as you mentioned. And then his second, uh, he's called, actually, I think this is very close to the original, community engagement. That, number two, I think, uh, Amy, that really is the, what you have summarized here comes under that bullet point, uh, number two. And then the number three, update expansion and a register of historic resources. Kirk, you just mentioned how expensive, uh, and exhaustive, uh, that work is. So again, that, you know, it's important, but we need to keep that in mind that it's, that kind of goes over into the long-term, um, plan. Mills Act and so on. Uh, we've talked about the Mills Act. Unfortunately, it doesn't really apply, um, or we can't apply it in the city of Placerville. We had that explained to us recently. Uh, number five, expansion of historic district to include Main Street. Uh, we just heard an update about that. So, you know, we're all in alignment, uh, in, in agreement with that. And then number six is, uh, consider re-establishing the historic advisory committee. So, uh, as I read through this, I, I tried to compare the original to the red line version. I think it's, it's very close. It's, uh, like I said, there are some editorial changes. Um, so, um, the only change I would make to, uh, what we have before us is add a few details, like, um, describe the, the formation, uh, in bullet points, uh, how we had, came to have a special, um, committee, um, somebody of this, uh, group. Uh, and then, let's see, on the first page, one, two, three, four, uh, where it talks about the, um, the duties of the historic advisory committee, that really is a, just a relisting of the ordinance. And I think it's important at that point to say that it is. And so, um, I was going to suggest that we say, you know, something along the lines of per section 12 of the ordinance or section 12 of the ordinance reads as follows. And, um, rather than stating it as a goal, uh, just say, you know, these are our duties and, and keep the lettering that comes from the ordinance, A, B, C, D, and so on. I think that's important if, um, we move forward with, uh, the list that Amy prepared. With this, I think it would be important to highlight to city council where the, why do we think we can do this? Well, then we can cite, uh, we can, um, reference this memo from our special advisory committee and say that, you know, this is under our authorized duties and, and so we are recommending this. And recommending, uh, and advising are our duties, the planning commission. And, you know, this kinda gets back to budgets and so on, but at this point, I think we can move this project forward, uh, by combining these two documents and, uh, requesting, um, from city council, their consideration to authorize us, uh, you know, authorize whatever staff time they think they could afford or whatever incidentals they think they could afford to support, uh, the work, um, that, you know, the, the, these first preliminary steps that we as a body would like to take. Um, so that's the way I, I would like to, to move forward with this. So I'm kinda looking for, um, you know, your, um, agreement, uh, possibly we'll make a motion tonight, uh, to, to do something along these lines. So first step, I, well, Amy, obviously you want to say something, so.
Well, I just want to like, kind of come into what you're saying before we, you close it off too much, is, um, is I'm in agreement with you and I think what we could do, in my mind, as you're talking it through, to move it forward tonight. So what I did, I honestly, I just, I had to ask Ryan for the memo. I just, I've been really busy. I'm really sorry. And so I didn't get my comments in until the day before. I didn't have time to do this, which is what I would love to do.
I thought it was yours.
I know. I would love to dig in like this, but I just didn't have time to create the document on my computer and edit it. Um, so I would be, I would love to ta- I think Michael did a lot of really good stuff in here. Um, I think the language could be tightened and a little like depersonalized a bit, um, to like, make it just a little bit more, I'm very like, write as little as you can and get your point across because that's what people absorb. So I think there's a little bit that could be tightened in here, but I think it is really good. And I think if we could decide which priorities we are in fact going to list between Michael's, between mine and between any other ideas that any other commissioners have, we could nail in the points that we want to say, hello, city council, this is what we are seeing, this is what we're working towards, even if it's bigger, like, I do think we should keep it to ones that we actually are going to pursue. So like, I'm a little like eh on the Mills Act.
I'm, I'm gonna stop you right there. We can't pursue anything. It's the city, city council and the city.
Recommendation, recommendations, that's what I mean.
Depersonalize it. These are, these are priorities that we want the city to.
Just to let you know, we knew that Michael Friend wouldn't be here. And what it says in the minutes of the last one is that we wait for five people to be here. So we didn't expect to, to be able to do anything tonight because we didn't have a product to present because you wouldn't have five people. But back on the issue of the workshops, uh, they just, the city just had one on the issue of.
Downtown events.
Downtown closures. They had 60 people show up. All they had to do was put out a notice that took two paragraphs and they got 60 people to show up. Whatever the city does regarding closures on Main Street, it's gonna have a lot more credibility and it's. more credibility, and it's going to have a lot more respect from the public, because they know that we listened to them, we gave them more than three minutes. So that's why it's particularly important to do.
I think the work, I'm sorry. I think it's important, but I also think that we can't just throw out a workshop next week without doing some work on this end, to really be clear on what the point of the workshop is and what the goal is. Because you can hold a workshop, but without really having our minds together on what we're looking for, it could just turn into a session where people are telling you their opinions or going on about, I don't, it could be unproductive, is what I could see, without proper preparation on the back end for the workshop, which they're really busy. And so unless you're going to put the workshop on, do all of the preparation, do the moderating, do the presentation, and be fully confident on what you're presenting to homeowners, like, by all means, go for it. But to do that, I wouldn't be comfortable doing that right now with where we're at, with where our standards are, and with the work that we're actually literally on the verge of doing, which is what I wrote in my document around workshops, was that we need to eventually do that, not, that's not a first time. I think it's super important to get buy-in and to get notice, which is what I keep touching on here, to have people be aware. But just saying, let's just throw out a workshop, I think is simplifying it and also could lead to more confusion and maybe even mis-messaging. Does that make sense?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, that's fine. We just, we disagree, I guess.
It's, it's kind of like the rabbit in Alice in Wonderland, who said, first we'll have the verdict, and then we'll have the trial. You're giving conclusions, you're giving recommendations, and then you're going to throw it out to a workshop, for what? Whereas if you hear from them first, you get some guidance. I'll give you an example of just when you talk about bringing back the Historic Advisory Committee and why that would be a problem. When people talk about why they want it, it's because they feel that those issues have not been given proper priority. But for those people who've actually gone through the process, it actually adds an extra layer. For example, for the Herrick Building, when you, when you go in to present to the planning, to the Planning Commission, your plans, they didn't have drawings back in the 1800s filed down with the city. So they present the best they can, and then when they start doing excavation, they find out they're sharing supports with a building next door. Having gone through the Historic Advisory Committee and before the Planning Commission, if they came back and went back and presented new standards, new plans, they'd have to go back through that whole process, which would be extraordinarily burdensome. So a lot of folks who actually lived with it, who lived with those two systems, the Planning Commission and the Historic, wouldn't want it. Other people might, but what they, what they're saying is they want you to pay attention to those issues.
Perhaps I can bring a little bit of clarity here. Two things. First, thank you very much for the time that you spent making those recommendations. And I agree with you that we kind of started off with more of an aspirational document. And I agree with you that I think it needs to be more of an actionable document. And to that end, and I'll come back to the workshop thing, I'll get there in a second, but to that end, I agree with you that I would actually, in the interest of making this a more actionable document, I would take out the more aspirational items here, because I do think it distracts from what we're trying to accomplish here. And so I would be honestly in favor of removing completely, obviously, the expansion of Historic Districts. That's already happening, that's in the general plan, as you noted in your, in your, so I would just remove that section completely.
Because that's in process.
I would also remove the Mills Act participation for now, because I think it's a distraction, and there's other things that are more priority.
Well, and also, it doesn't apply.
Absolutely, yeah.
The city situation, so.
Yeah. And then I would also be in favor of removing at this time, the re-establishing of the Historic Advisory Committee, because that's such an aspirational item. And like I said, we, we were kind of going that route originally, to be more aspirational instead of actionable. And now that we've kind of had this discussion over the last couple of months, I agree with you, this should be more of an actionable. So if you guys are amenable to it, I believe taking out that four, five, and six completely would be less of a distraction. So that's point number one. Point number two, and I think to Kirk's point, and maybe where the disconnect is on this, is that I think we're talking about the possibility of workshops specific to updating our ordinance, our standards. And so not...
You mean the SOI one?
Yes, so, so, yeah. And so replacing essentially, however we decide to go about this, whether it's updating, replacing, those, that workshop would be as part of the process. I believe, and I'll have to ask staff, I think, you know, that process would start with an NOI, Notice of Intention, right, that you're, you're planning, that's, you know, puts it a place marker in the book, we're planning at some point to make a change to this ordinance. And then under the auspices of that, then that's where the workshops would come in. They'd be specific to the purpose of updating or replacing our historic preservation, not just a mishmash of this whole document. And so I think that's, that maybe was the disconnect between Commissioner Smith and you, is that the workshop would be specific to that item, item number one, that our, that our special committee thought was probably the most important. And that's why we're bringing to you guys, is that we think that either the updating or the replacing of that ordinance for historic preservation. And anyway, so that is, would be where those workshops would come in.
Totally.
Specific to that item. And then I think a lot of the suggestions that you made here to Chris's point would go under item number two in the Community Engagement, Improve Communication, your one-pager, it's something we've talked about, it's a fantastic idea, I don't think it'd be that expensive. The sign thing, I mean, I don't, you know, that's something else that's obviously going to take staff time, but it would fall under this, too. It would be, it would be, you know, education. You're in the Historic District, you see it, okay, wow, I'm here. And so those items, we could, we could incorporate into that item number two. And then item number three, and I think the reason that we put it lower on the list is because it is kind of one of the more difficult, I mean, it's probably not as difficult as updating the ordinance, honestly, but I think it kind of falls on this list to number three, because of the difficulty and the cost associated with that, because it's a, it's a...
Are you talking about this SOI?
Yeah, no, no, the, I'm sorry, the Register of Historic Resources. So like our, our inventory, if you will, so the update of our inventory.
Yeah.
So I would recommend possibly at this time, limiting it to those three categories, and then building in the suggestions that Commissioner Lepper made, and then some of the changes that Commissioner Friend made, and make it more of an actionable document, something that we can say, this is specifically what you can do and who can be responsible for it. And then when we make those, that recommendation to City Council, it's not just, like you said, it's not just this nebulous, huge, like, holy crap, this is a lot of stuff.
Right.
We can actually do something.
Yeah, and it informs them of our efforts going on, because you have put a lot of effort into this. So letting them know that we have put our brain to this side of our, of our job, you know? And we have put a lot of time and thought into this. This is what we see is like, really, you know, a new look at what our priorities are and how we hope to achieve those priorities as the Planning Commission.
Sure.
Could we do this? Could you give us, because it's now no violation of the Brown Act, since you've already got the product, can you give it to us in WordPerfect on a thumb drive or email it to us?
Actually, before you get down that aisle...
Real easy.
What I'm envisioning is rather than continue to modify the original memo, I think we have an agreement based on some of the changes that Michael Friend made and what we just discussed tonight.
And your recommendations that you just made.
And so leave that as a work product of the Special Committee.
Yes.
Also, Amy, so this is then a second work product. So what I'm envisioning is stacking these. So do a final of the March 13 memorandum, and, you know, give attributes to Ryan and Kirk and Michael Friend, you know, that they put work into that memo. Then, Amy, this is a second standalone document where you've kind of analyzed not only this memo, but our other discussions. So again, not much, if you would like to, you know, submit a second draft of this, but I think it's fine the way it is. The only thing, changes I was going to make on, or advise that we make on, is that we link what you're talking about to specific items in the ordinance as it stands. You know, we have, you know, there's like 12G, there's 12E, I can't remember which is which, but make sure that the City Council knows that we see that as a part of our duty under the existing ordinance. And then I am willing to write a summary memo to, for our approval here at the Planning Commission, to then we submit that to the City Council. That summarizes this work and kind of says again, you know, that it's a big project, this is what we think we can do while we're considering and looking for money to pay for and, and consider rewriting, or reconsidering how we apply those SOI standards. Because, yeah, we're not there yet, we're not even sure how to set up a workshop, although we all recognize the necessity for that. So what I was going to ask the group tonight is to make a motion requesting the chair to prepare that summary memo, and then attach these documents to that summary memo that we can then convey to the City Council. I want to make sure in that, that I review the work to date and reference these documents, and then request their authorization to proceed. I think that's what we're missing here, is that, you know, we want to do these things, we see all sorts of opportunities, but we're not in a position to really move forward. You know, volunteerism is great, but we really, this will require some staff time, it will require some incidental expenses, and the city needs to know that, you know, we're serious about this. And, yeah, we can volunteer, as, you know, you pointed out, you're assigning things to Planning Commission, just, you know, generally speaking. So volunteer work is great, but at this point, I think we're ready to tell the city, you know, this is, this is our analysis. But I don't want to move forward unless I've got your support for that. So right now, would one of you like to make that kind of motion to request me to do that summary memo?
Would you want to see final, the final documents before you prepared that memo?
Well, what I was going to do is ask Kristin if you could send me the Word document of Michael Friend's work, and I will incorporate, I'll accept changes, incorporate the changes that we just discussed tonight, again, and then get that to you to include in a packet at a future meeting, for all of us to look at, to make sure that I've captured everything And I can work, Amy, I can work with this document, again, sending it back to Kristin to convey, to Amy, make sure I haven't misspoken, but put in those details, like I said, attributing this to those specific duties in the ordinance as it stands, and then write that summary memo. And I think, I really think I could have it, I don't know what our agenda looks like for September 3, but if we could fit it in there, or maybe a subsequent meeting, you know, I'll have to work with staff on that. Tonight, we're running kind of late, but, you know, I don't want to lose this energy. We have interest and a need.
I believe, I'm trying to remember, I know there are two items on our upcoming agenda, I believe. One is a Historic Districts review, and another is a Master Sign Plan Amendment. So they should be, it should be a lighter agenda.
Okay. I really think I can, you know, the work's been done. I think I can summarize these things and write a cover letter, again, to all three documents for all the Planning Commission to review and, and hopefully approve, maybe some minor modifications, and then we can send that on to City Council.
The deadline to submit documents to you for the next agenda, Kristin?
August 26.
August 26?
Six days, okay.
It's the Monday prior to, the week prior to...
Close of business the 26th.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I'd just ask, Commissioner Carter outlined a series of modifications. We would have the five members here next time, why not have him present a product for you to examine at that time, along the lines of what you just...
I'll have a more streamlined, less aspirational, more actionable document on, to Kristin, in time for the next agenda, and then that will, yeah, I will make that happen. You know, using, utilizing the input from the three of you to incorporate some of that into that, to make it more actionable, and I think, yeah. But I don't see any reason, you know, not, for the chair not to obviously do...
Cover memo?
Yeah.
Letter or transmittal is essentially what's left to be done.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, but I would want you to have the final documents, obviously, before you, you know, otherwise you'd just be doubling up your work.
Right, I would be working off of this. Like I said, I would accept changes and do that work, but...
Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion? Given the kind of product you just described, and your appropriate, in essence, cover letter to the council, it would be not us asking for permission, because we're really doing exactly what they asked us to do nine or 10 years ago. So it's really saying, given a status report, this is what we've done with the directive you provided. Does that...
And we're actually, it's not, well, it is kind of a bit of authorization to proceed.
Ah.
That's the second phase. It would be nice to get some input from the council officially.
That's the second phase, which is to ask for, because it's allocation of money if they want to do these things.
And again, in the transmittal letter, I would be tying this to that list of duties that is in our existing ordinance, and under, you know, I can't remember, 12E, 12G, but, you know, it is our duty to advise you, it is our duty, you know, to comment. And so make it very clear that we, you know, we're staying in our lane, and if they're interested, if they want to move forward with this, that they...
It gives me a great chance to come back to you and show you this one paragraph that the City Council announced two weeks ago, that brought in 60 people just to comment about closures on Main Street, to show you that maybe it wouldn't be such a tremendous taxation of staff resources, but we'll see.
It's absolutely up to them to decide.
It is 100%.
So much has been done, and we've spent so much time on this, and I really would like to move this forward and see, see...
You have absolute agreement for me on that, yeah.
Because, you know, we've done quite a bit of wordsmithing and discussing, and I think we're done with that.
I agree.
We've gone as far as we can with this.
I agree.
So, all right. So do we, do we have a, do we have a motion?
I move that Commissioner Carter commence to do the first draft and have somebody available for everyone to consider that will be submitted on or before August 26.
No, that's not really the motion, that's, that's already work that we have in place. So what I was looking for is to, for something new here, a new direction for the group, because we've been talking about, you know...
Didn't we already do that when we had the discussion about Chair Friend's memo? I thought that we had already had that conversation, that there was going to be a memo from the chair when all this was transmitted. We've already had that, I thought, that conversation.
Are you ready to do that?
I thought we already had.
And so this is a little different in that we also have now Amy Lepper's work that would be included.
Right, right, right.
So it is a slightly different, slightly different take on it, but, yeah, I don't, I don't want to put the cart before the horse if we're not ready, but I, yeah, I want to make sure that...
I'm just not sure what that motion would look like, but I...
Yeah, I don't know, do we need one? Because I feel like we can just kind of let it sit and then circle back to...
We're all in agreement that we want that letter to happen, but I don't know that we need, I'm not sure how that motion would look.
I'll try and get into you, to you, any edits that I have, like, that I think will be helpful as soon as I can, and you can decide if you want to take them or not, no problem.
Again, you'd be sending it to Kristin?
Yes, but...
And that is the issue, is that, yeah.
Right, the serial meeting thing, and, yeah, I understand.
The reason I pointed to Commissioner Carter is because I thought that he crystallized very succinctly the kind of things that you've been describing, that, I mean, you described what was inspirational and aspirational, and what was practical, what we had to do, and what kind of things had to be cut out consistent with, and then some of the things that Amy wanted to add that we thought was appropriate. So that's why I started, thought the first, it was possible that way.
All right. Well, I think, I appreciate your continued work on this. And the next item I'd like us to consider, and Steph, I really, I don't know exactly how best to approach this. Is the Special Committee still in force?
Yes, the Special Committee is still standing until the recommendation is made to council, or the recommendation is made that the memorandum, cover letter, and whatever additional documents are sent to council. So once that motion is made, then the City, the Special Committee has run its course.
Which brings me to another question. Did you ever?
Wait a second, Mr., I have the floor here. All right. Okay. Because I would, it's my preference for us to move forward as a committee of the whole. That's really, you know, we have our, our memo, and we were wordsmithing and trying to set priorities. But if that is the, the rule, then that special, and the two members of the special committee still are Kirk Smith and Ryan Carter. Not, Michael Friend didn't step into one role.
No.
Okay.
That would constitute a required, it would be Brown Act regulated.
Right. But we also, at the time, talked about, you know, relieving commissioners of the burden of doing all the works.
Right. So right now, the special committee is Commissioner Carter and Commissioner Smith with the goal to get the memo completed and to city council. And I believe, if I remember correctly, the discussion was that there was going to be a, you know, divvying up of tasks.
I would love for that to happen at the next meeting, by the way. I'd love for that to, yeah.
Whatever city council's determination was.
I feel like, we somehow are, we're spinning our wheels here. And, yeah, this memo, we've been wanting it to go forward since March.
Yes. I would love for this to happen next meeting.
Yeah, inclination to, to disband.
Yes.
Or disband and then reform when we have our mission. So, all right, well, we'll continue as we have it now.
Are any of the recommendations that I put in my memo ones that you guys don't want to recommend to city council? I just want to make sure, because we looked through Michael Friend's, and I want to make sure that you're okay with all of the ones that I put on here, that they are things that you want to go towards city council.
Yeah, I mean, all, all of them are things that we've talked about in the past.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure you were comfortable with what I had.
Oh, the last one. Explore possible expansion of the historic district to Main Street.
Oh, right. We were removing that, yeah.
Yeah. That one was just me trying to.
Which you said, it's already in the general.
Et cetera, you know, and things that are explicitly stated in our general plan. So great.
And the historic district long-term priorities, yeah, emphasize, and we need to emphasize, we, we recognize this is a very long-term project. Redefine the SOI standards in their application.
I do think if we could accomplish that, it would be a really great thing. But I know it's a lot of work.
But it's going to take, we, we're not yet able to make our case.
Steph might have some input.
No.
I'm sorry?
There.
We're not able to make our case yet. And, and also, it's going to take significant commitment from the city, as we mentioned earlier.
Okay, cool. What is this?
That is a result of, you know, I was confused about the action we took last week regarding the minutes. And so Kristin provided that to us.
Okay, cool. Okay.
Just a.
I just, I just hadn't heard anything about it yet. And I'm like, I have one paper hanging out here still from this meeting. What is it? Okay, good.
All right. Well, we have our, our marching orders. And so, so Amy, you are the, the odd man out on the special committee. Everything you need, you do needs to go through Kristin.
Totally. I was wondering to Kristin.
You, Mr. Smith and Mr. Carter, being the special committee members, yeah, can still work together on this with a, an updated act, action-oriented, as opposed to aspirational-oriented draft.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just couldn't see you at the line of sight. But the question I wanted to ask is, we had, I mean, I had a different understanding of what Commissioner Friend's resolution was, but the problem is, it wasn't recorded, and that's happened a number of times. So the question I wanted to ask is, what steps do we have to make sure that doesn't happen again? What happens if the recording goes off? What do we do?
We have the minutes.
Yeah. They didn't allow it.
The minutes don't, or, or like, a couple lines weren't, no, it's not the same.
Or your notes.
I asked the, the staff, he says, if you, if you stop the meeting, you'll be able to correct it. But if you keep going forward, you can't correct it, and we won't get it recorded. And I don't, I want confidence that the next time that won't happen, that's all.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. Well, thank you for all of that. Look forward to seeing the next drafts. Anything else from staff on these matters? We're having a sidebar over there, so there's no summary to report?
No, the sidebar is, we were just making sure that we were all on the, staff was on the same page in terms of when the subcommittee, the special subcommittee concludes its work.
I'm sorry, when the subcommittee?
Concludes its work.
Yes, okay.
And then it moves on to where it's now the commission, the full commission to take action, so that the chair will sign a cover memo or what have you, and then, then we schedule it for the city council.
Okay.
That's what we were discussing.
All right.
Wanted to make sure.
Thank you for clarifying that and getting us all on the same page. All right. And now, it is 9:03, and are we stand adjourned?